Call the order of regular scheduled meeting at the 34th City Council for June 11, 2024 at 7:00 PM. Everyone in the audience, can you please just remind you to silence any cell phones or communication devices to not disturb the meeting? And if you do have some conversations that you have to make with somebody, please take it right outside the door, okay? You can't hear?
I know there's a microphone in here. Could you please use this? We cannot hear back here.
Yeah, we have, we have microphones, ma'am. They're, they're right on our, on our desk, so. Jack?
I can hear you.
Okay, well, we'll check with the sound. Can you check with the, with crack and see? Yeah, just check with crack and see. Okay, thank you, folks. At this time, Mr. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ines?
Here.
Councilmember Hamud?
Here.
Councilmember Abraham?
Here.
Councilmember Paris?
Here.
Councilmember Elsawan?
Here.
Councilmember Eric?
Here.
Council President Serini?
Here.
We have four.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. At this time, I'd like to turn over the meeting to Councilman Ken Paris.
Thank you, Council President. At this time, it's my pleasure to introduce Reverend Monica Ola of the Help Us Near Missionary Ministry Church, who will give the invocation for tonight's meeting. Everyone that is able, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Let us pray. What a privilege we have to pray. Father God and Maker of everything, we give thanks for this day, and Father, by faith, we choose to honor you with tonight's invocation. Thank you in advance for your mighty hand of protection, your watch, care, and your peace. Thank you for the leaders representing Dearborn City Council and the mayor. We know their labor isn't easy and requires a desire to serve, so, Father, set a watch care over all their families during their absence away from home. As for Dearborn citizens and their concerns, may there always be help, direction, and if a need should arise, some sort of fair and equitable resolution. Now as tonight's agenda is fulfilled, may our time here be filled with harmony, respect, and understanding. May your wisdom, oh Lord, guide any discussions that may arise. Justice for all, and continued growth, and blessings upon the city of Dearborn. So let it be written, so let it be done, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Reverend. All right, so, Mr. Clerk, we, can we begin with the first item of business?
Yes, item number four, resolution by Council President Serini, supported unanimously, acknowledging 12 police department employees who were recipients of departmental awards based on overall performance during the fiscal year of 2023, and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So, tonight, we'd like to acknowledge the 12 police officer departmental employees who received departmental awards based on overall performance during the year of 2023, and we are requesting immediate effect. I wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to off, to honor these outstanding officers, and I know the chief is here to speak on it. So what I'd like to do is be able to read into the record, and if everyone could hold their applause to the end, and then we're going to bring these officers up here for the council to come down, give them their citations. As everyone knows, the Dearborn Police Department is, is well-known in the city of Dearborn and along the state as far as keeping our citizens safe and protecting our streets. So when we have awards through, that are awarded at the end of the year or for the year prior, we think it's very, very important to be mentioned. So, Officer, Police Officer of the Year, we have Corporal Ali Katan. We have Dispatcher of the Year, Amy Bullock. Police Outstanding Service Award for Lieutenant Sergio Propresso, how do you pronounce that?
Propresso.
Propresso, you've got it. Police Officer Department Service Award for Officer Corporal Matthew Schniffer. Not sure if he's here, but we have 12 of you here. We also have for Police Department Outstanding Service Award for civilian Nicole Golowski. Police Department Service Award for Reserve Officer, Chief Medical Liaison, Dr. Hussein Saad. We also have Police Department Michael A. Guido, Community Service Award for Corporal Robert Grantford. Police Department Meritorious Service Award. These are all service awards, Meritorious Service Award, which are six, six police officers. We've got Commander Bazey, Commander McHale, Lieutenant Kapanowski, Lieutenant Lozowski, Lieutenant York, and Sergeant Grisher. Police Intern of the Year is Daniel Guterres. So we'd like to recognize and thank all of our awardees and acknowledge them tonight. Thank you. I know, I know some of, thank you. I know some have brought their families, which we really appreciate that you did that. Before we come down for the council, I'd like to give the chief some opportunity to speak, and did you pick the awardees?
It's, we're alone, it's collective.
Committee.
Collective.
You got it, chief, go ahead.
Esa Shaheen, Police Chief, thank you for taking the time to read those awards. What you see here today is the finest representation of the Dearborn police officers. There's a lot of hard work that happens behind the scenes, and I appreciate you reading all the awards, but the four members that we have here, I'd like to just briefly highlight why they were recognized.
Absolutely.
So Robert Gafford there on the left is a corporal. He works in our day shift. He was awarded the Michael A. Guido Service Award. Corporal Gafford is a field training officer and evidence technician. He's one of our finest field training officers, and it's one of the greatest honors in the police department to be a training officer. What we're saying is that you represent what we're looking for in our new officers, and he takes that job very seriously. He's very conscientious and kind and patient with our young officers, and I appreciate all that you do, Robert. The next one I'd like to highlight is the Police Department Outstanding Service Award for the Reserve Officer, and that's our Chief Medical Liaison Officer, Dr. Hussein Saad. Dr. Saad, what you do for the members of the police department, we're truly grateful for. He's not only a reserve officer, he'll do surgeries in the morning and then spend his evenings patrolling streets with our officers. It's truly remarkable. It's a labor of love. You've been doing it for how many years now, Dr. Saad?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. And all of that is volunteer work that he does. So, folks, he's not only a doctor, not only does he take care of our officers and our medical needs, but then he comes out and serves the community. Thank you for all you do, Dr. Saad. And then Lieutenant Papesco was awarded our Supervisor of the Year. He works in our Critical Incident Community Support Unit. What does that mean? He handles all the protests or demonstrations. The city of Dearborn has a lot going on. We have how many special events a year, Lieutenant Papesco?
Hundreds.
Hundreds of special events. Six, October 7th, we've had maybe 50 demonstrations. All of those have happened peacefully, without an arrest, without an injury, and Lieutenant Papesco was a big part of that. We thank you for what you do.
Yeah, I think, chief, I'd stop you on that one. I hate to stop on that one, but with the amount of demonstrations and things that are happening throughout the global world and the eyes on us, to have no issues at these is, is a testament, so.
It's remarkable.
I really appreciate it, Sergeant. I appreciate it.
And then finally, probably the most prestigious award is the Officer of the Year, and that was awarded to Officer Ali, Corporal Ali Katan. Ali Katan is one of the hardest-working officers that I've seen in my 26 years. He is out there every night, doing everything he can to make sure to keep our streets safe. He puts himself in harm's way every night doing that, and we're very grateful for all your hard work, Ali. Thank you. And then the last, the last thing I'd like to recognize is the families that are here today, you know, what your officers do every night to keep our communities safe. There's a lot of sacrifice on the family's part. There's a lot of worry, and we appreciate all you do to support our officers, make sure that they're healthy and come to work every day. So, thank you. Corporal Gafford has five beautiful kids. Gafford, kids, let me see your hands.
All five of them.
There they are, all five of them. Thank you.
All right. Chief, just, just one last thing, I want to make a small comment about Corporal Katan. Personal, personal friend of mine, I grew up with my children. I recommended him when he was coming through, and I'll tell you, the days of when my generation or some of the other generations grew up where your officers were also your, you know, baseball coaches and basketball coaches and lived in your neighborhoods has changed, right? I mean, laws have changed, a lot of people do not live in the direct community that they serve. But it doesn't mean that it's, it's not preferred, or it doesn't mean that it can't happen. Ali's a Dearborn guy, grown true and true. It is, it is very heartfelt for me, because I know what you do, and I know we talk, and to see you be awarded and being a Dearborn man that went through a Dearborn schools and, and to serve your community is excellent, so I just want to make sure we mention that. Thank you. Chief, would you like to come back? Chief, hold on, you can get in. That's right, that's right. George? Yeah. Excuse me. George, it's, 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 folks, thank you very much for that, allowing us to present those awards. The council, okay. We've got to bring the meeting back order. I just want to thank everyone for that brief presentation. This council has made it a point to highlight the positive things that are happening in our community, something that I created and my council was fully supportive of, and we want to recognize the great work that's happening around the city. There's a lot of positive things that are happening, so we, this is something that we changed our rules that it would come up in the beginning of the meeting, so we can acknowledge it, so we do appreciate it. At this time, Mr. Clerk, we are going to go to the public comment, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, so, I know there's a lot of people in the audience today, so keep in mind, some people are here for an agenda item. Your comment card, you have? Yes, are with me. So, this public comment, what we're going to do is have issues that are not regarding something that's on the agenda currently today. So if you're here to speak about Oakwood rezoning, that will come up right, right after. So this public comment is reserved for city, city business that is not on the agenda. So I know we have three cards regarding the Civic Center, the Ford Performing Arts Center. Director Tate, you have a question?
I have one. I have an announcement I want to make.
An announcement?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, come forward, Director Tate, yes. So, do we have to suspend the rules or we're good? Okay. So we're going to have our director, Jack Tate, come up, make us an announcement, and then we're going to go immediately into the public comment. Council President, Mr. Council, thank you so much. Jack Tate, curator, Dearborn Historical Museum. I've got two things I want to bring up for you. Number one is, the Tennessee Peach Truck will be in the north parking lot of the Dearborn Historical Museum tomorrow from 8:30 to 10:30. Best peaches in the country. So, they have bags and they have boxes, so come and help yourselves. Thank you, Jack. And secondly, it's time of year again for any of you that have kids, grandkids, nieces, nephews, the Teddy Bear Picnic is on. That's on the 29th, from 10 to 12. A&W sponsors it. We'll have all the games, pop-up tents, everything else we've had in previous years, so have your young lumbas come with their favorite teddy bear. We'll have prizes for several different teddy bears. Councilman Eric can probably tell you about that, and thank you so much for your time. Thank you, Director Tate. Thank you very much. Our library director? We're going to get these couple out, and it won't, it won't bear on the time for the public comment. These are announcements during the public comment time. Director?
Thank you, Council. I appreciate your time for this. It is summer reading time with the library.
Need to state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Director Betty Adams, Library Director. Too excited for summer reading.
That's okay.
Summer reading kickoff officially began June 1st with our large program starting, happened on June 10th with a play that was featured in our newly renovated auditorium, but we have the whole summer packed with programs and different events for the whole community to enjoy, and we really would love to see everybody register for summer reading as a whole family. Anyone can participate, age not the limit. So, hope to see everyone there, and thank you guys for your time.
Thank you very much, Director. Okay, so, so now we're going to open it up to our public comment. Again, just a quick reminder, you have a three-minute limitation. Please address the council only, do not turn to the crowd, and keep in mind that the clerk will let you know when there's 30 seconds remaining. I'm going to go in the order of the cards we have, and then if you'd like to speak and you don't want to use a card, just please raise your hand and I'll acknowledge you if you'd like to come for it, okay? So first we have Mr. Jackson.
My name is Larry Jackson, Night Gale Street, Dearborn, Michigan, lifetime Dearborn resident, retired city worker, I had 30 years, 11 months on the job. When I retired 21 years ago, I immediately joined the health center next door. The main reason is I'm trying my best to get every pitch and check out of the city. There's a couple of things that have happened over there that I just want to bring to your attention, and I think you should know about them. There's been, my 21 years I've been there, I've never seen a problem blocking off the panes looking into the swimming area. I hear it may be a privacy issue, but this is a public pool. People are going to look at you. You can't get a lot of privacy in there. I hear there may be some verified incidents of people behaving improperly. If they are, I don't understand why these people can't be kicked out of there, and this problem be taken care of. Blocking windows isn't going to fix that problem. They can still get into the pool area. I'm surprised when these panels went up, no one asked the input of the people working out there. I've not talked to one person who wants those up there. One thing very important health-wise as far as this, are these panes, especially the lower ones, the lifeguards look at them. I can't, I can't believe nobody talked to the lifeguards about this. They're supposed to go by. I've talked to them, somebody's in emergency, they're their first line of defense. They're the first responders. One recently had to get into the hall to save somebody who was having troubles with diabetic problems. These are all safety issues. I do not understand also the money being spent on this. We've got no attendant there in the morning. Workout area is dirty, the locker room's filthy, and the pool's even worse. I recently was told by one of the people in there, one of the ladies in the pool, she showed me the steps going into the whirlpool, the sauna area, they got black mold on them. There's also weeds all over in the outside of the little patio out there in Michigan Avenue. I'm going to end up tonight quoting Mr. Serini. Ah, now he's smiling. I hope you all remember him.
I am, I'm smiling, I'm smiling.
No, I hope, I hope they'll resonate with what he said. He made a lot of sense. When this, when this middle age was turned down, I remember distinctly Mr. Serini saying a couple of times, "We, the people, have spoken," and then it was something to the effect, "We have to listen to them, and we're going to back them." My question to you people in the administration, are you going to listen to the will of the people like us?
You have 30 seconds.
Is that what I'm asking you? You know? Take down all panels, especially the lower ones, that are a, a real safety hazard. There's a door, by the way, also, where you come out of the pool. If that's caught off blind, somebody walks by, you're going to get nailed by a door. Thank you for your time, attention, courtesy, it's matter, solemn my life.
Director, yeah, okay, so Director Fletcher would like to come up real quick. So, Mr. Jackson, thank you very much. So, what I can say, and then I'm sure everybody's going to have their opportunity to speak, because that's why we're here. Okay. I did have a conversation with the mayor regarding this, he's not here today, regarding this. Our director is here, because I'd like him to speak about the, the amount of money and that we are infusing into our Ford Performing Arts Center.
We can't hear you, performing arts.
Yeah, I apologize, folks. We do have these microphones on, so I'll try to speak up a little bit louder. So, I just wanted to clarify a few things. I did speak with the mayor regarding this, and from my understanding, they were taking them down the next day. Is that correct, Director Fletcher?
That's accurate.
Okay. So, the council doesn't have, that's an administrative issue, but we made it clear that it was a concern. The mayor obviously agreed and took them down. As far as our Ford Community and Performing Arts Center reinvestment, some of you that have social media might have been able to see recently, we are putting hundreds of thousands of dollars in reinvestment into there that hasn't been in there for years. The entire building on the outside, which is well over a million dollars, every single piece of glass is defective in design, and we are removing them and re-putting them back on. That's just from the exterior, okay? There's also several upgrades, including free weights, machinery, several, so, Director Fletcher, if you'd like to state your name and just give, just high-level some of the improvements that are coming forward that have not come forward yet.
Sure. Good evening, Sean Fletcher, Parks and Recreation Director. Some of the things that I would add would be the addition of new flooring. We have some new treadmills that are coming in, and I know those are popular. One of the complaints we received as a result of some of the blue film panels that were put up was the amount of light. So, prior to that happening, we had already planned on adding some LED lighting, because that area at night does get fairly dark, so we have added some of that lighting. I think once people see the, the new fitness area, and we do have a video running outside in the lobby of the Fitness, or the Ford Community and Performing Arts Center, that video's pretty, pretty cool, and it's, it's a significant investment that you folks, of course, were part of, and like you said, over 20 years without a lot of investment in that area, and it's going to make a huge difference. I would also add that we have a survey currently about the frosted windows or something to help with the modesty issue. I would add that nobody has voted for that at this point. That survey still remains, so, obviously, we will work with the mayor and the administration once we get to a point where we need to make a decision, but as Mr. Jackson stated, we're certainly listening to the people.
I appreciate it, Director, and I know it's, it's not in the council's direct hand, but indirectly it is, as we are holding the funding of this, of that institution. I think the mayor did get the, get the picture regarding, but I want to make it abundantly clear that regardless of the amount of light that you put in there and what lights you put in there, it needs to be the natural sunlight. There's ways to use, there's ways, as we've indicated in our, in the council's study session regarding signage and stuff, that you could put things that let all the light in and still blur out some imaging, if there's any concern for that. And as far as any concern of any criminal activity or anything, the council and myself, I could speak, have, I'm not aware of any of that. So, if there is, I agree with the statements. Someone who is a lawyer, if somebody's doing something wrong, we have the full ability to remove them from, from the facility. So, I, I think it's abundantly clear, and I think the mayor understands that too, but I just want to make sure we have that. Chief, would you like to speak on that?
Just want to add, just to the, the conversation, just something, just for, for the audience is that the director did mention this, that we're open to suggestions and recommendations, and the survey is one option to do so. I think that the Park and Recreation team have made themselves readily available. Please feel free to reach out with any suggestions or recommendation. We're only as good as a collective effort. So the ideas that the community provides us, we try to take that in and provide an operational response. So I think continuing that line of communication is important. Our team, I would say, is, is one of the best, and they are onsite all the time, so please feel free to reach out with any suggestions, and the survey is still out, so.
So, Chief, for the survey, I want to make sure that we highlight that, because it's great to talk to the people there, but this administration, which I agree with, is data-driven. So I recommend that everyone here, when they have time, to go on their phone, and where is that, Director? How can they get?
It's actually a paper survey. I don't think we have it online yet.
Yeah, it should be online.
It's literally like three questions, so.
Okay. So, Chief, do we have any expectation for that to be online for the residents?
We can reach out.
Okay. So if you go to the city, our, we're having a tremendous upgrade in our infrastructure and our Google, working with Google and changing our website button. I hope, and Jackie, make a note of that, it's a request that the survey be placed online at cityofdearborn.org for the questions, because that's what matters when you, when you send that back in, it gets right to the data. Administration does look at data, and data matters. The people don't want it there, we need to find out what it is, so I appreciate it. Go ahead.
Sorry, one other thing I would add, and Mr. Jackson alluded to the presence of staff on the floor, so to speak. Part of the renovations to the Fitness Center include adding a small fitness desk, a fitness supervisor desk. So you will start to see some people in, in that space, if we can, of course, get some people hired, but in that space, available to help with some of the cleaning, but also to help guess if they have questions or if they have a fitness question.
Right. No, I appreciate that, and I know that we're, another thing that there's only concern is when, when I hear something about mold or siphish issue, so Jackie, make sure you make a note of that. So, Director, if you can, I'd like you to respond back to the council in its entirety of where that is and what that found, because we're, we're not short-staffed and we're not short of remediating, and if there's mold, that's a health issue, and that can't wait for anything, so.
No.
All right, so we expect back an answer from you on that?
Yep.
All right, thank you, Director. If you just remain up here in case there's any other questions regarding this, we have Mr. Yahya Saad. Mr. Saad? Yeah. That's the first time, I want you to know that we had a clapping before you got to the podium. I was going to clap for you, too.
This Yahya Saad?
Yes.
I've been Dearborn for 54 years. Then Debbie, she's going to speak behalf of everybody over here.
That would be great.
Okay.
Debbie Yeager, 5848 Orchard. I've been a Dearborn resident over 70 years. We're here representing over 150 members who have signed the petition that I think all of you have received.
We have received.
Concerning the, the community center. As a community center, we are open to the public, both citizens and non-citizens. We are not a private center. We can't dictate modesty. We were not aware of all the changes that were going on that affected our exercise routines, and as such, now we're coming to you, because we have no other place to go. We've put in suggestions, we've put in the suggestion box, but nothing gets resolved. Um, therefore, we're here to express our concerns. I'm sorry, I didn't address you, members of the council.
So.
I would like to thank all of you who helped to work on getting the film off of the windows at the community center. In the days following the removal, there was a visible increase in mood and morale of all the members. They were smiling and happy, and if anyone talked to the mayor, he walked through, and everyone gave him a thumbs up. When deciding on the next step in renovation, please take into consideration the morale of the members, but more importantly, the personnel responsibility, responding to medical emergencies, both in the pool and on the floor. They're the lifeguards. They're the ones with BCLS training. They're the ones who are in charge of the AEDs. I realize that there are other people in the facility who have their BCLS training, but by the time they get on the phone to call them, and if they can't see a person down with a diabetic coma, or with a heart attack, they've gotta get on the phone, get somebody from around the corner to come. Time is of its essence. I'm a nurse. You don't wanna waste time when you have a medical emergency. These lifeguards need to be able to view through the windows, the medical emergency that's happening. If it's obstructed, who knows, we're gonna have a poor outcome. Looking at the windows and seeing the outside increases the morale, decreases mental illness, as your health department director will, will tell you, and it also will, can help elite athletes reach their personal best. When it was closed, everyone was depressed, nobody wanted to come. Multiple people said they were getting rid of their, their memberships because of this. If you've ever run a marathon, and you have to look at a machine, and that's all you see...
You have thirty seconds.
Thank you. It, it is very, very depressing. Safety of our children has been discussed. If the windows are open, we have all these eyes on these kids to make sure that they're safe. An additional concern is the increased disregarding of the state health regulations in our own community regulations. Perhaps stricter, consistent enforcement of these rules will help to resolve this issue. As a community center, we're proud of our center and members. However, more personnel is needed, as we said. We would appreciate the opportunity to have open communication and input in our contin, in our continuing remodel, to make sure that the center is a safe place where our members can maintain a healthy, happy lifestyle. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, uh, just briefly on that, for, for the public, um, I, I appreciate everybody coming up, and as far as, uh, you have nowhere else to go, we are the elected Bali, and this council, uh, under, uh, this, uh, tenure, um, did change our council rules to allow the residents to come and have this thirty minutes before, so you wouldn't have to sit in the audience for three hours for our meeting to finish, to go have a public comment. So we do wanna hear from you, and, uh, please use our, uh, emails as well. Um, there should be an all council email, Jackie? And, uh, council staff and council email, but we do wanna hear from you, so I don't want anyone to feel that they, if they, I always say, if, if they're calling the council, something has failed, and that's why we're here, so we, we do appreciate you coming forward. Uh, next, we have Barbara.
Could I add something real quick?
Yes, absolutely, Director.
Yeah, I, just, as it relates to lifeguards, head lifeguards.
Yes.
They often have their eyes on the water, and the head lifeguard is usually watching to make sure the guards have their eyes on the water, so they're not often looking into, uh, the fitness area. We do have, uh, a good walkie-talkie system, and the head lifeguard, lifeguards are the first responders in that building, and, you know, knock on wood, we don't have any more, uh, life-saving incidents, but we have had a couple, and our lifeguards have responded quickly, as has our building staff, to make sure that nine-one-one is called, and we're fortunate enough to be just down the road from a fire station, so, thank you to our fire department, our paramedics who always get there quickly, and, you know, thankfully, we've, you know, not had any major issues.
Thank you, Director. And ma'am, I'm sorry, I couldn't read the last name, so I apologize, I had to...
That's, that's fine, thank you. Can you all hear me? I, I just wanted to say two things.
Ma'am, ma'am, I'm sorry. I, I'm sorry, you didn't hear me before. You cannot address the audience, you're here to address the council, so I need you to state your name and address for the record, and address the council.
Sure. Barb Krupke, I live at 5500 Calhoun.
Okay.
Apartment six oh two.
Thank you.
I had two things to talk about. Number one is safety, being is how the lifeguards are in the pool, they need to see the exercise equipment. Number two, we are a public pool, not private. If people are worried about being seen, they should not come to a public pool. If we are gonna stretch it out, are we gonna close Camp Dearborn? Because that's public, too. Exactly. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you. Thank you, folks. All right, uh, I do not have, is there any more cards regarding public comment that's not on the agenda item? Anyone else here that would like to speak regarding a public item to the council that is, uh, not concerning agenda item? Sure, step forward and state your name and address for the record.
Hello, council members, my name is Rick Prusak, four nine zero five Middlesex. Um, I'm here to kinda dovetail on what Councilman Parrish talked about earlier of city services. We have a situation on Middlesex where there are hundreds of cockroaches coming out of a city sewer. I call it an access line, because it's located between the curb and the public sidewalk in front of, uh, forty-nine fifty-one Middlesex, and my neighbor to the north of me, uh, has had a couple cockroaches in his house already. I have pictures where he put down a sticky pad that picks up, uh, any kind of, um, critters like mice or rats, and he's, in one hour's time, he's got seven cockroaches in his driveway apron between the curb and the public sidewalk. So he, my neighbor, um, got me out of the house, and we went at nighttime with flashlights, and you can see the cockroaches coming in and out of sewer cover. Uh, past, uh, Councilman Parrish, you talked about city services. I lived on Middlesex for thirty-six years. I have yet to see anybody come and suck out the sewers. Uh, as you know, when leaves and grass accumulates on the storm drain, it just sits there. It has no place to go but float. But my concern is, this area, I don't know if it calls the access hole, or whatever you call it, to the sewer, there's cockroaches coming out of there, and they're, they're, they're all over the place. So my neighbor has been spraying, but you guys need to get the sewer people, uh, city sewer people out there, to use that vacuum truck and start sucking out our sewers.
Sir, yeah, I appreciate it. What we're gonna do is, um, get the address, Jackie, so you can have it for us. So I could tell you, sir, we, uh, have funded, we have a contract with Orkin, we have a, a, a contract for this, we actually treat the sewers in the winter, so, at the time, which is the most important time for, to have us have, so our director's here, so I'm gonna have him get your address, and Director Hawkins will report back to the council the status of it. Uh, I appreciate that you're giving us the information of what's wrong, and trying to find a remedy, too, which is nice. A lot of people come, you know, say that and don't have a remedy, but for us, it might not be the sewer truck, but, uh, you might have a situation there that's specific, and we will address it, because that's not, uh, it's not the residents' obligation to go out there and spray and put a pad. So I'm glad you brought it forward to us, but this is the first time that we have heard of it at the council.
Okay.
And I don't know if, if, if your, uh, if your neighbor or anyone else has contacted the city. So now that you have contacted the city, um, we're gonna have our director talk to you and find out where it's at, and we'll get to the bottom of it, okay?
Thank you for your help.
Yeah, and if you don't get it resolved, please make sure you contact the council.
Okay.
Director Hawkins will, will get that information. Director, you'll report back to the council.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else here to speak to the council regarding city business that is not an agenda item? All right. Sir, yes, step forward, sir. Rami.
Tell them to move down the park.
Sorry, sir.
Today, I'm, uh, I'm here to address the urgent need for our city to divest from companies tied to Israel. As Martin Luther King once said, "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." Today, we have an opportunity to embody this principle and stand with the people of Palestine in solidarity. As many of you are aware, Hamtramck has already taken the bold step to divest, setting her precedent for ethical leadership. While we may not be first, Dearborn stands in a, in a unique position with the highest concentration of Arabs outside the Middle East. Our community is not just influential locally, but also globally. The Arab community here might be the most powerful Arab community in the world. It's our duty to do what's right by the people of Palestine. Today, Palestine is fighting for its survival and freedom, and it is our duty to support them in every possible way. I have in my hand right here, a copy of the Dearborn stock holdings. Among our stock holdings, there is an excess of twenty million dollars invested in companies directly profiting off the genocide and the oppression of the Palestinian people. While Michigan law currently restricts divestment from these companies, we must remember that laws are meant to serve the people and uphold our values. When they fall short, it is our moral obligation to challenge and to seek to change them. Taking this stand now will send a resounding message to state lawmakers that Dearborn prioritizes ethical responsibility over complacency. Furthermore, I wanna stress that our community's support is unequivocal behind this cause. We are not only residents, we are voters, who will stand by you if you choose to divest despite the legal constraints. Conversely, if you fail to act, we will remember. The upcoming elections will reflect our commitment to ethical governance. Dearborn has the opportunity to lead by example, showing that our city will not compromise on its principles, and I urge you to take immediate action and divest from these companies. Stand with Palestine, stand with justice, and stand with the people of Dearborn. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right, any other, um, any other, any other one, anyone else here to speak regarding an item that's not on the budget, on the hearing, I'm sorry? On the agenda, I apologize. All right, if not, we are gonna close the public, uh, comment portion. Mr. Clerk, can we go to the next item?
Item number six is a resolution in need of offer and support approving all the items on the consent agenda.
Offer by Councilmember Humud, supported by Councilmember Enos. Is there any questions or comments? Would anybody like to remove, any council member like to remove, uh, any individual item from the council agenda to be discussed individually? Okay. Okay. Um, since there is a hearing and seeing none, uh, Mr. Clerk, can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Enos?
Yes.
Councilmember Humud?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Parrish?
Yes.
Councilmember El-Sawafi?
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick?
Yes.
Council President Serini?
Yes.
Seven yeas, the resolution passes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next, uh, item.
Item number twenty-nine, resolution by councilmembers Enos and Herrick approving the minutes of the previous special meeting of May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four.
All right, uh, Mr. Clerk, is there any additions, deletions, modifications, modifications to the minutes? All right, Mr. Clerk, can we have a roll call vote?
Yes, you may. Councilmember Enos?
Yes.
Councilmember Humud?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Parrish?
Yes.
Councilmember El-Sawafi?
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick?
Yes.
Council President Serini?
Yes.
Seven yeas, the resolution passes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, next item.
Item number thirty, resolution by councilmember Abraham and Herrick approving the minutes of the previous special enclosed meeting of May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Are there any additions, deletions, or modifications to these minutes? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Clerk, can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Humud?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Parrish?
Yes.
Councilmember El-Sawafi?
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick?
Yes.
Council President Serini?
Yes.
Councilmember Enos?
Yes.
Seven yeas, the motion passes.
All right, uh, next item.
Item thirty-one, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Enos approving the minutes of the previous regular meeting of May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four.
All right, is there any, uh, additions, deletions, or modifications to these minutes? All right, Mr. Clerk, can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Parrish?
Yes.
Councilmember El-Sawafi?
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick?
Yes.
Council President Serini?
Yes.
Councilmember Enos?
Yes.
Councilmember Humud?
Yes.
Seven yeas, the resolution passes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, next item.
Item thirty-two, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Enos approving the minutes of the previous special meeting of May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four.
All right, are there any additions, deletions, or modifications to these minutes? Okay, uh, Mr. Clerk, can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Parrish?
Yes.
Councilmember El-Sawafi?
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick?
Yes.
Council President Serini?
Yes.
Councilmember Enos?
Yes.
Councilmember Humud?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Seven yeas, the resolution passes.
All right, Mr. Clerk, uh, next item, please.
Item number thirty-three, ordinance on the table, ordinance number two-four dash one-eight-one-nine and ordinance to amend section nine point zero-two of ordinance number zero-six dash one-one-one-one of the city of Dearborn by rezoning the property located at eighteen-thousand Oakwood Boulevard from an RA-one family residential district to a BB community business district, RE multiple-family residential, and VP vehicular parking district zoning classification. Resolution by councilmembers Abraham and Serini to take from the table for its final reading.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Your natural role should be attached, take from the table for its final reading. This is a request to rezone eighteen thousand Oakwood Boulevard from the, the former Howard, Howell, sorry, Howe Elementary School from a RA-one family residential district to a BB community business district, RE multifamily residential, and VP vehicular parking zoning classification. The proposed, uh, RE zoning would provide an appropriate and softer transition to the BZ zone properties located north and west of the site. Multi-family zoning districts are often used to buffer more intense commercial developments from single-family, uh, neighborhoods. In the contents of this proposal, rezoning and the parcel size and locations, this rezoning will help, uh, support several goals stated in our master plan, including rightsizing Dearborn's, uh, supply of commercial properties, diversifying housing stock to respond to the community's demographic changes in age, income, job mobility, and how, and, uh, household composite. It also preserves and improves and expands the quality of life factors that attach, uh, that attract and retain an ed, educated and skilled workforce. Uh, we also have newly revised additional from the property owner has offered two self-imposed conditions that will run in perpetuity with the land, um, unless otherwise rezoned. The first condition limits the RE zoning to one specific typology, uh, with condominium stacked units. The second condition is stipulates that a minimum required setback of thirty-five feet in the area adjacent to the single-family homes, instead of the required or mandated nine feet. Planning Commission recommended approval of this request at the January ninth, twenty twenty-three, uh, meeting. The Planning and Zoning Division recommends approval to the, um, approval to the Planning Commission as well. This is the second and final reading, um, regarding this ordinance. So before we take questions from the council, and we have plenty of questions from the audience, um, Planning Division Manager, would you like to speak on this, state your name and give us some background as well?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Kaylee Bianchini, Planning and Zoning Manager. So that was a, a great overview, Council President, so just to highlight on a, a couple of other additional points. Um, so per the master plan and the future land use designation, essentially as a reminder, either the BB, BC, BD, or PUD zoning classifications are consistent, uh, with the future land use designation. Um, in, in reviewing the proposal, um, essentially, if the property were to be rezoned entirely to commercial, which would be permitted under the master plan, that it was recommended to be too intense, which is why when the property originally was proposed to be rezoned, and the request was even for BC, it was a recommendation of denial. Uh, with the proposed conditions also being proposed, uh, it really, in, in our recommendation, provides a softer transition than if the whole property was commercial, which once again, would be permitted and consistent with the master plan. Um, as outlined, we do have a really significant need for additional housing typologies in As outlined, we do have a really significant need for additional housing typologies in the city, especially ones that attract a different demographic. Oakwood Boulevard has two major employers, that would be, I keep saying, almost said Beaumont again, but with Corwell Health, as well as Ford, or Ford Motor Company with their, essentially their new hub that's coming in on Oakwood. The condominium stacked units, we believe provides an appropriate typology for this area. It's most likely, per the density requirements, the setback requirements, and all the other requirements in the zoning ordinance, would probably end up being more attached row style. That is considered to be an appropriate typology for this area. Once again, I think that with the conditions that are securing essentially a setback to those adjacent single-family homes, which as a reminder, you can really see that in Exhibit B9 for members of the council. You'll see that that whole area in the front that's VP zoned, no structures are permitted there, can't be any storage of cars, simply in relation essentially to the businesses that are there. And then in addition, 35 feet setback along the rear, ensuring that no buildings can also be constructed within that area. As a reminder, the RE zoning classification also has a requirement per the zoning ordinance that essentially stipulates that before any development can even be constructed there or approved, has to go to the Planning Commission for a more comprehensive review and approval. As a requirement of the ordinance and of our Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, property owners and tenants within 300 feet of that property will be invited to come to that meeting, see exactly what's being proposed, and offer their feedback specifically. That site plan review approval and authority also offers additional opportunity to discuss density, as well as vehicle circulation. So once again, there are definitely additional steps that need to be done before anything can be constructed, but specifically that RE multiple family zoning designation reserves a lot of additional purview and opportunities for public involvement that additional, that other zoning classifications do not have. So that, I think, is a huge benefit to what is being proposed as well.
All right, thank you, Kaylee. And then, uh, just to give us some background regarding one of the roads that was open, but before you bring that, I wanted to just make a quick statement too regarding this because since I've been here, um, over 11, 12 years now, Ford Motor Company, which I'm employed through a dealer group, I know that my councilman is directly, uh, is directly put as an engineer at Ford. When their new hires are coming in there, and this is from Fordland we've talked to, they, they give out brochures that don't even include Dearborn as a place to live because of the lack of condominiums. Look, I mean, to me, I love that I have a house and I have the lawn. Some newer generations don't want to cut the grass, don't want to do any maintenance, and condominiums are affordable way where the taxes are significantly lower. And this is something that's, that's been going on well, well past it. But when Ford Motor Company is headquartered in your city and they're not letting their employees know that you have housing in this area, it's a concern for, uh, for us as a, as a council, for me for sure, that we have to try to get these people that are engineers, executives, and so on and so forth, young talent, to stay in Dearborn. Ford Motor Company has made a tremendous, uh, investment into, into City of Dearborn, which many people do not know by the Etzel Ford area, a new campus, a tremendous new campus. So this is something that's, that's well needed. I'd like you to speak a little bit about that road, because there were some questions about that road, whether it's been open and where's it run through?
Yeah, absolutely. So in addition to Oakwood Boulevard, which obviously this property fronts on, there is also a private drive that extends from Oakwood to Rotunda. I believe the, the mayor indicated at one of the previous meetings that he already sat down with, I said Beaumont again, Corwell Health, to have a discussion about having access to that private road. Once again, that's something, is a private road we can't sign off on, it would have to have the permission of, of Corwell Health. But that was something that the mayor identified early on as an opportunity to kind of improve vehicle circulation in that area. Once again, that would be something that would be looked at more closely once the, if the rezoning were to occur, and then they come in for site plan review, that would be looked at more comprehensively then. But that has been something that was already identified as a significant opportunity to improve circulation in that area, and the administration has taken steps to assure that can occur, so.
Okay, and then just for the legal aspect, Mr. Romer, I'll let you chime in on, but for Kaylee, the council, once we do a rezoning, right, all the things that you're talking about are not handled through the council. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Planning Commission, uh, the ED Department regarding the rest of the density, public input, and so on and so forth. Lighting, like we had on telegraph, certain light, timage, wattage, et cetera. All those details are not handled by the council. It's handled internally, is that correct?
That is correct, or through the Planning Commission, correct.
Through their, okay. And then, Mr. Romer, if you could just speak regarding, I know I have spoken a few times regarding zoning and the, what's required for us as far as legally on what we can look at and what we cannot look at, if you can.
Certainly. So your code, you have a zoning ordinance with a enumerated criteria in section 3206 that specifies what the council can consider when it's reviewing a rezoning request. But I would emphasize to the council that the courts, and I would say even our zoning ordinance, emphasized the consistency with the master plan use. So I can, I can list those things, but it's in that section 3206.
I think you've sent it to us already, Mr. Romer, so I do appreciate that, yes. I just wanted to make sure that we know exactly what our rulings are. All right, so at this time, I'd like to open it up to my colleagues for conversation, and then we'll get, of course, the cards from the public, actually. Councilman Hamud?
So I guess, um, just one quick question before I make my, uh, comment to the planner. As far as, um, you said we got permission from Corwell to utilize Beaumont Drive. Is that in lieu of a entrance to the development on Oakwood Boulevard?
So there hasn't been specific conversations about the details of the proposed development yet, right? Since we're only considering rezoning, but offering that as an opportunity, I wouldn't say that that would necessarily be in lieu of, but just as another opportunity to alleviate congestion.
Yeah, so just to like, not a hypothetical, like, I'm trying to understand something here. So the, um, an interest on Oakwood Boulevard, would that go through planning?
So it would have, it would come through planning because essentially anything that had, requires site plan review. Not only administrative, Planning Commission, but since it's Oakwood Boulevard, we actually would not let that permit, that would be the county. So county would also have to agree.
Okay, no, I'm just wondering, just for the sake of, uh, future things, okay. So kind of to dovetail off of what Council President Serini was saying earlier, you know, you mentioned a document that I've actually seen myself, uh, as a new hire back when I was in FCG.
Good.
You know, and I, and I actually got offended when I saw it as well, you know, as an old timey Dearborn person, I suppose. I grew up here my whole life, and I don't, and I feel that this is an appropriate place to live. I think we have great schools, I think we have great services, and we have great people, of course. And, you know, it was very disappointing to me that we weren't listed, and I did ask the same question that you did. I didn't get to talk to as high level people as you, but I did talk to my colleagues and other people who had gotten in as new hires, and I asked them, you know, where, where do you want to live? And, you know, you always hear kind of like the same answers, which is, and I was kind of really surprised because of the commutes, but it's like, you got Canton, Ann Arbor, people would move here from like Boston or whatever, they will only live in Ann Arbor because they're like, I want to live in a real college town, because like, I guess we're not college enough. And you got downtown Detroit, which was also funny to me as a local, and then, uh, you know, Royal Oak, and, and if they could afford it, they have rich parents, Birmingham, you know. And starting at your salary, no, it's pretty good, but not always the best. That's why you have to make sure that it's affordable to these new employees as well. You know, I think people also try to, like, affordable or good, or workforce housing, you know, it sounds like a bad word sometimes, but people need to understand that, like, even younger professionals today have a hard time affording these things. And I wasn't a professional that long ago, I'm only 29 years old. I started full-time at Ford at 22, and, and I could barely even afford a house. I got lucky, I got my house before COVID, and I was able to get a single-family home, and I share it with my brother in order to afford it at the time. But still, now, even today, new engineers who hire in still can't find housing in Dearborn to this day. And, you know, the Council President brought up a specific housing typology, which is condominiums. But I would say also, uh, mid-rise and high-rise apartment buildings are also very popular with younger people. I think you guys can, can all, uh, talk to people, but it's, it's, um, it's kind of where the market is now, and it's the type of thing that I do feel that we need to work on moving toward in order to ensure that we are a 21st century city that can attract the talent to ensure that our employers stay here and continue to thrive in our city. I think we all appreciate that Ford Motor Company, Carhartt, and other industry are in our city to provide the tax revenue that enables us to have a level of services that we have for a city that says, uh, you know, has the amount of single-family housing we have. And I think we're a phenomenal place to live. I mean, I think we're superior to a lot of our neighbors, and I think all of our residents can agree to that. So, you know, uh, I, I have more comments about the development that we have or the future possible developments that we have in front of us. But I would just say, as far as housing types and typologies, it is a critical problem and issue that we've been facing, and not just us, but also industry has been facing, because as people have shifted away from being in office, I mean, I've been working from home since the beginning of COVID, and I'll tell you, a large majority of those employees are never going, are never coming back. And cities now are going more toward trying to get people to actually live in them. You know, even to this day, cities like New York City, Chicago, even Detroit are struggling to recapture the, the commuters that they used to have. Dearborn actually used to be the number one commuter city in the state of Michigan. Our population used to swell up to 200,000 during the day. That's why all of our services are actually sized quite large relative to our population. We still have the most police per capita of any city, because, you know, that's kind of like the standard of service we got used to, but that was also subsidized by all those workers used to come. You know, they, they would patronize all of our local businesses. Now, if you go down to West Dearborn, I think you guys are people at home, everybody can see, it's locals, which is a good thing. You know, it's a good thing to have a self-sustaining economy. We have an economy where small businesses are actually doing much better than the rest of America. If you guys go out and visit places like Flint, places like, uh, you know, Romeo, like, all these towns that, that used to have a lot of people there, they don't have people there anymore, and we're still a growing city, even in a time when Michigan itself is shrinking, which is a blessing. But part of that is, we need to make sure that we retain our population, we retain the economics, we retain those dollars that flow locally to our businesses, our business owners, and to our local governments that enable us to have those services that, that we all, you know, appreciate and gotten used to. So, um, you know, it, it's going to be tough long-term to, to, to change, you know, because we, we got so used to a certain type of lifestyle, and a certain type of typologies, and, and ideas of, of what housing needs to look like. But I think, um, it's important we also keep an open mind and ensure that we regulate and, and make sure that people don't, you know, go too overboard one direction or another. So, um, I, I appreciate you guys working on this and, and trying to get to a place that, um, we can try and, and, you know, square that circle, I think.
Thank you, Council. Uh, Councilman Enos?
Yeah, thank you. I really appreciate everyone's comments and emails, phone calls on this topic. When this was first reviewed, I had some current concerns, three of which are traffic, flooding, and safety. And after several meetings about this, I still have those same concerns, that's why I have a problem supporting this.
I just wanted to make that comment. Okay, thank you. Did you have any other questions, though? No, okay. Councilman Perez?
Thank you, Council President. I too have some concerns about this, and I'd like to make some comments before we go forward. One question that I have, though, for the administration, I've asked twice now, if we got any information in regards to extending Oakwood Boulevard as a Boulevard from the engineering complex that's being developed now, uh, from the Michigan Avenue area towards Rotunda, or is it going to go past Rotunda? I know initially, when we first started talking about the economic, I'm sorry, the engineering complex, that we did have some discussion about a turnaround and what have you for fire engines to be able to turn around in that particular area and extending or making walkways. And there was some discussion about a Boulevard, but I'm just wondering if we had any answer about how far Boulevard may be planned in the future from the administration?
Well, I, yeah, Chief, I, if you may, or I don't, because I know that was asked, but I mean, it's, it's a hypothetical, right? It's a question on what the county would do?
That is a hypothetical, Council President. It is a county road, and we've had, uh, and if you'd like, I can add just the information that we do have.
Yes, whatever you do have is, I'm sure he's, it'd be sufficient.
Yeah, this is, just as, as a reminder, as my team reminded me, this is a county road, and the only conversation that Wayne County has had with us is regarding what the, the initial project has been intended for, which is the storm water, um, system that they're putting in, in that area. And the reason why they're connecting, they're connecting with us is because they'll have to tap into our, our system. That conversation has been underway. They will be starting that project, which, uh, on June, forgive me, you just sent the information today, June, June 24th, 2024. Now, the Boulevard conversation will be part of the resurfacing conversation. That has not yet happened. When more information does become available to the city, we will be more than happy to share it.
Okay, and who are, who are the stakeholders in that, so we know?
Yeah, the stakeholder on our, so it is the county, it's, um, the county DTE is a part of those conversations.
M.D.
I don't have M.D. listed, but that could be a possibility, Council President. I don't want to miss, uh, misspeak, but at least the information I have is that they have a consultant engineer that has heading on like Wayne County's side. Our engineer, who's liaised with the county regarding this project, is measured. The utilities, because utilities are in, in question, is obviously DTE. So those are the stakeholders.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Since that is the only information that we have on that subject at this time, I'll just go forward. I know, I, I'm going to say just out front, you know, to be perfectly frank about this, I've attended a number of these Planning Commission meetings since 2000, even before, a period of time before I was on City Council, when this particular property on Oakwood came up for discussion. So I was there as an observer, as a resident, I was not on council yet. I listened, I listened to what the Planning Commission had to say, what the Planning Department had to say, what a number of people that got up, including realtors, were talking about the project, the area residents were talking about the project, and then later on, a couple of years later, that room was packed. There were a lot of people there. So I had the opportunity, and I wanted to do that, uh, because I wanted to hear from myself. I wanted to hear from anybody that might be looking into that development. I wanted to hear from the realtors that were there. I wanted to hear from the residents that may be in favor or may not be in favor, just to educate myself on the overall thought about what everybody had in mind, including the Planning Commission and the Planning Department. I will say that I have learned a lot about zoning over the past couple of years, because this has come up a lot. I do have a lot of questions. By no means am I an expert by any means, especially like this gentleman here, that brings up a lot of issues. But I will say that zoning ordinance considerations, uh, they're documented. You know, what kind of an impact to surrounding areas and residential areas? Any parking issues, noise and noise ordinance violation, hours of operation of any new businesses, impact on enjoying outside activities, the use or misuse of water, sewage or flooding issues, vehicle traffic and traffic noise, use of city resources, uh, such as police and fire, water and sewer, DPW. Also, anything about smoke, fumes, odors, dust, glare, lighting pollution complaints. I just wanted to go on from there, but I'll cut it, okay, but I'll cut it short here. But I will say, when quality of life and enjoyment of residents in their own homes and neighborhoods are affected and concerns are raised, it's up to me to listen to people and seek remedies and listen to what people have to say. So I will be voting, when we come up, I have, obviously, for the vote, now just leave it. But one other comment here, just at the end, even as Councilman El-Sawafi made mention earlier, uh, on the monitor, during budget study sessions, council did question the call-response times of both fire and police. You know, the Fairlane Town Center and the Snowwoods area have some of the times for response for fire service in particular that makes us look at other alternatives as far as being able to provide service, better service, to reduce some of the times. So I think this project may have something to do with those decisions. So, thank you.
Excellent. And then, Kaylee, if you can, uh, one of the points brought up that I think is worth indicating is that the MS4 qualifications regarding the size over one acre, can you, just high, not engineering terms, high level, what does that mean?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I appreciate the non-engineering terms, because I'm not an engineer. But essentially, when it goes through a site plan process, whether that's administrative or it's something that requires Planning Commission review and approval, like would be in this case, they have to adhere to MS4. What MS4 really means is it's very stringent requirements around stormwater. They have to be, like, that means essentially they have to retain the amount of water on the property and have a very strict regimen about what can get released back into the system. Obviously, currently, or how the property was zoned and because of its use before, it has a lot of upgrades that needs to be done before anything, you know, could be constructed on the property. So that's a very stringent review. Once again, it's not even just us, it's Wayne County, because they'd be tapping into Oakwood. So they not only have to adhere to our requirements, we adhere to Wayne County, uh, requirements for MS4. We essentially adopted their requirements. But at the end of the day, same as the curb cuts would require a permit to be let by Wayne County, it would be the same exact situation for any tapping into the system. Not only us, but Wayne County would have to approve of it.
And MS4, high level, state-regulated?
Yes, yep.
And basically, what that means is, so there's no concern, all the water that comes off of that property has to be maintained in that property and then released at specific times, and so on and so forth, so there's not going to be any concern of flooding?
Absolutely. And in fact, I would, I would offer that it would be an improvement to, to what's existing, because essentially...
Without question, without question, yeah. And there's, there's no secret that I've been saying about the flooding and the sewer stuffs for, for many, many years. So we are, this council and this administration has took it very seriously. As you know, our studies come back, and we're in the beginning of stages of, of what we're going to do. So for us, uh, these guidelines are right up what we were looking for anyways, is to make sure that we don't have the flooding that we had in the past. So that is not a concern, because it must maintain on, on the actual property.
That is correct.
Okay. So at this time, if there's any other questions for my colleagues, I want to move to a public comment.
Question, Council President.
Councilman El-Sawafi, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Council President. And Kaylee, I apologize in advance for any redundancies, but it's a legitimate concern that our residents are bringing up as far as the traffic studies and impact to the sewer system. At what point is that appropriate? Is that what we're doing here now? Or is that done later on? Is that done later on? I know that's a concern for a lot of residents. I know we don't know the exact specific use that's proposed here now, and that's not what we're doing here. Can you explain that process? I know we did, we explained that last time, but just high level, is this going to come up again? Is there going to be another opportunity for residents to speak on what's actually being implemented?
Yes, thank you, Councilman Elsawafi. Yeah, so absolutely, and I can definitely understand and appreciate that at this point there's a lot of questions. Essentially, the way that the law works, the way the ordinance works, and the way that our processes work, is that we always start with zoning, right? Zoning, essentially, all it does is create the framework and the possible uses that would be permitted there. When we talk about very specific things, such as what is the exact use, what are the buildings going to look like, what are setbacks, where is landscaping, screening, all that kind of stuff, that is what is considered site plan review, right? It's not something that can be discussed when we talk at a very high level, such as zoning, unless that is specifically being proposed by the petitioner. So in this particular case, what we could take into account is, one, they're restricting it to the stacked condominium typology, right, as was discussed, as well as the fact that they have now required in perpetuity, unless the property were to otherwise be rezoned, 35 feet setback in that rear portion of the property. One of the things that I would highlight, Councilman Elsawafi, to your point, there is absolutely an additional opportunity for public feedback to specifically go over what exactly is going to be occurring on the site. That is a requirement in the RE district. So public notices would go out, people invited to attend, we would go over what exactly, where are curb cuts, right? How, what is, where is turning going to occur within the site? Where are the buildings being located? What is the screening? All of those details would be something that would come up through that process. Unfortunately, legally, we cannot talk about those things at this stage. I also can very much appreciate there's been continued conversations about traffic studies. I would offer that that would be something that is very appropriate conversation to have when we talk about it going to the planning commission for site plan review and approval. One of the reasons we also can't talk about it at this stage is that when we actually do a complete traffic study, what is required is that we actually look at the exact site plan, the exact square footage of how much commercial, how many units. That goes through a very rigorous process with an external consultant, someone that we hire, so not as a third party, who's unbiased, right? They don't provide their own traffic study, they work through us. That is something that the planning commission could explicitly require before they, you know, approve of any proposed development on the site. And once again, that's something that's reserved only for this typology, the RE.
Yeah, Councilman, just real quickly, I'm glad you brought that up, Kaylee, because there's been a lot of questions about you should or you must do a traffic study beforehand. So this is the first time that you explained it that way, which I understand. I just think it's very important to reiterate again, a traffic study is no use until you know the exact site plan, square footage, so on and so forth. And that's why it's done after.
That is correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Councilman, I, go ahead.
No, I appreciate that, and I appreciate you, Kaylee, for that explanation. And so it will be appropriate at that point, when we, once we know the specific use and all the data that we have as far as the sewage impact and the traffic studies, then the planning commission, that could be approved or denied at that point. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Perez, you have another question?
With this issue?
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to ask, because I think this came up in a different discussion, not in regards to this particular project, but when you're talking about the notification of 300 feet, you know, anyone within 300 feet of the proposed development, have, that is law to be able to do that, or have to do that. But have we not, in the past, now also increased that beyond the 300 feet to include the neighborhood associations and areas outside that 300 feet? So it's not just 300 feet that are notified?
So, great point, Councilman Perez. So actually, what was approved at last night's planning commission meeting was a revision to the bylaws. Their bylaws were old, I'll summarize it to keep it short, but essentially, it required the, it referenced a department in a position that no longer existed for neighborhood associations. What we've done is we've actually worked internally with our community relations department to, as they've been working with their neighborhood liaisons, to get the neighborhood associations re-registered. We essentially codify that in the bylaws. So moving forward, if there is a project occurring within an area that they have registered with community relations, they would be notified as a part of that process as well. But that was something that was not legally, we couldn't do, because it was essentially referencing an obscure title and department that no longer existed. We have rectified that at last night's planning commission meeting, actually.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for my colleagues? All right, we want to open this up to the public. We have several cards here. If you haven't filled out a public card, please do so, or if not, when I get to the end, please raise your hand or acknowledge, so I can bring you up to the front. We have Professor Gary Crosby.
My name is Gary Crosby. I live at 1430 Culver. That's the first block off of Oakwood. So I go through the area in front of the property pretty much every day, Monday through Wednesday, driving to work, approaching Southfield. So I see how much traffic there is there, and I fear how much more traffic there's going to be once the Dearborn Inn and the research engineering centers open up. What we're looking at is traffic, number of cars, but also the mix with pedestrians. By and large, the effect has been to keep people from going across Oakwood Boulevard, because you don't have attractive items across the Boulevard. Now, with going from low-density housing to high-density housing, you're certainly going to increase the traffic. It may go first onto the little side road there, but it's going to come to Oakwood if it's going off to Melvindale or the Fairlane Green area. So more traffic, automobiles. But then you're also having people living there, some of them working at the hospital, they're going to want to walk across Oakwood Hospital. It's a very dangerous business, walking across Oakwood Boulevard. For the residents in Snowwoods, there's no neighborhood retail. I mean, you could go to the hospital store, but nobody expects prices to be reasonable there. But people at the hospital are going to want to go across to a retail store if it's across the way. As I said in my first talk here some weeks ago, we count on council to help keep the quality of our neighborhoods together. And when you talk about trying to keep certain behaviors from happening, well, sure, you could build a wall and keep people from walking across Oakwood Boulevard, but it's not the nature to have a wall. Much better is to have a policy where you don't have attractive nuisances located across Oakwood from where the neighborhood is. The people who, it's a good walking neighborhood in Snowwoods, you just have to go across Oakwood Boulevard and you get to retail stores. Now, why is that? You have to go half a mile to get to any retail in Snowwoods. That's the automobile city that we are, that you have to drive to places. Well, they drive to Allen Park, to the Fairlane Green, like that. There aren't sidewalks that go over there. So that gives it an element of safety, because you take your carapace, your automobile shell protection, security devices that the engineers have built in there.
You have 30 seconds.
You drive up there. But by doing what is obviously a spot zoning of retail, where there's no retail close by on that side of the street, anyway, that you have a strong attractor to get people to be going across the street, risking coming through. After the last visit here on Friday, we saw jaywalkers walking across the street. They're everywhere, usually there. And they're cowering in the middle lanes, because they can't get the rest of the way across the street, because there's so much traffic. So I ask you to oppose this on the basis of safety. I've talked about the mayor putting a little green man there on Culver and Glover. It's an important safety issue for an older neighborhood. It's also an important safety issue as we have, going through a transition now to younger kids in the neighborhood again. So, I encourage attention.
Of course. Thank you for being here. Next, we have Ronto Montamurri.
Hi, my name is Ronald Montamurri. I live at 1647 Linden Street, about a block and a half from Oakwood Boulevard. I, the people, the homeowners in the neighborhood are strongly opposed to this rezoning. Back in, when Oakwood Hospital was developed, single-family residential was the master plan of that area and the surrounding area. And this, what this developer has in mind is not what is going to help the neighborhood. For one thing, I forgot to mention last time, there's a new development across Oakwood Boulevard and Allen Park. There's going to be, it's between Southfield Road and the entrance to Fairlane Green. There's going to be new department stores, restaurants, car wash, and parking for over 700 cars. I don't think the council is aware of this and the impact that that kind of traffic is going to have on Oakwood Boulevard. So I urge the council to vote no on this zoning request. Another thing is that the council should make an ordinance requiring a third-party firm to do a traffic study and a water study before they vote on the rezoning. And that should be paid for by the petitioner for the zoning change. And that, we spoke to these issues last time, and that's what I have to say for now.
Thank you for your time, first.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Mr. James Schmidt.
James Schmidt, I reside at 1266 Linden. I also own the home at 1118 Linden Street. I'm not going to rehash everything. We would talk about traffic and sewers and water and crime and everything. Everybody's talked about it. You know our concerns. But I want to say, there's an old saying, it's not broke, don't fix it. Dearborn's not broke. I mean, the jewels that we have in this city, I just wrote a few things down, just jotted a few things down, education, grade schools, I'm kindergarten through HFCC myself, born and raised here, U of M Dearborn, parks, Camp Dearborn, whatever, what other city has something like Camp Dearborn? All the city parks and pools, two golf courses, the civic center in the area around it, Ford Field, Ford Woods with the ice arena, two hospitals, you know, Henry Ford and Beaumont, or Corwell, Greenfield Village, the Ford Plantours, Fairlane Mansion, all the museums and Ford World Headquarters, all their new hotels have been built in Dearborn, motels, the new train depot, the libraries, I mean, Henry Ford's Centennial Library, that's, I mean, what, a city the size of Dearborn, who else has something like that? I know, I was there when it dedicated, I was a little kid there, we got that little brass metal, I still got it somewhere.
You got it.
The city serves police, fire, EMS, the rec. department. Amazing. And the shopping we have, we have the business section on Michigan Avenue, Warren, Monroe Street, Schaefer Road, Fairlane Green. Fairlane, well, Fairlane's closing down, it looks to me. They're not paying their bills, Edison's going to shut them down. There's a great place to renovate right there, to rebuild there. The High Regis is empty. What a great place to put high-rise apartments in. There's empty commercial buildings in, and there's the commercial area there on Greenfield and Rotunda. I drove through, there's empty buildings in there right now that are, you know, and what are we going to do if there's empty buildings, a new thing they're going to build now? Empty buildings aren't going to help the neighborhood and they're going to help the city. All that'll be the tax shelter for the owner. Let's see, and if we don't rezone, how about all the large houses that are being built in the smaller city lots in Dearborn, on Linden, Walnut, I drive by, huge houses on these small 50-foot lots? What about making quarter-acre lots on that new area there?
You have 30 seconds.
And they can build large homes, they can have a garage, they can have whatever they want there. Houses? What, I saw on radio today, the average house sells in Dearborn in 20 days. I mean, and we talk about new, Ford wanting to have houses, you know, build houses for Ford, that's not a new problem. Look at the Ford Historic Homes District. That happened, Henry Ford built those for his people, but he built single-family homes.
Time has expired.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you.
Thank you very much. We do appreciate your comments. Ms. Andrea Unger.
Andrea Unger, Rutter Street. There were a couple of concerns on Thursday night when we had the committee of the whole, where it appeared that the planning commission has already planned to rezone this section, because it does not fit into the master plan. Is that correct? Is that what the council and the planning commission have said, that in the master plan, it is not...
Yes, it was stated, yes.
That was stated, that it's not designated to be a residential A, correct?
Kaylee, the question from Ms. Unger is indicating that, the same thing that she indicated on Thursday, is that residential, single-family home is not in compliance with master plan.
That is correct. Just small, small correction. Planning Commission is, that is essentially through the master plan process, the planning commission is not recommending any sort of rezoning, including what's in front of tonight, right? It has to be the property owner who has to rezone a property.
Okay, so a property owner has requested it, and then at the meeting on Thursday night also, you said that they were looking for input from the community, and they had very little input, they only had 500, and they wanted 5,000. So they said they extended. Has that information been distributed, so we know what the extension is and what it involves?
Well, you know, I think the chief might have that answer, but that's for the master plan, which, as the councilman indicated on Thursday, if the master plan usually lasts 10 years, and it takes a couple of years to develop, so it would not be appropriate for today's aspect.
Okay, but it was stated that there was no deadline, that it was still open to discussion.
Is that correct, Ms. Kaylee?
So, yes, there is a plan, Dearborn. So we're in the process of updating our master plan, happens per law at a certain period of time. We are currently in that process, plandearborn.org, if you go to it. It's collecting, we have a survey that's open right now, asking what you'd like to see in your community. It's still open, we don't have any, probably close it a little bit after homecoming, so you feel free to take it. But it's not specifically about this property, just to clarify. It's greater conversations about the master plan process. Yes, about the city holistically.
You said the master plan is indicating that it is not going to stay residential A in the master plan.
So the current master plan does not have this as RA. That is correct.
Ms. Unger, the conversation is for the future, that you're looking at. The survey is for the future of the next master plan.
Okay. So right now, it is designated as residential A, but you're asking rezoning to change it to multiple housing uses?
Residential A is not in compliance currently with the current master plan. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
Okay, so if people do want input, then they should go to that survey on...
Absolutely.
On the Dearborn website?
Absolutely.
Okay. Yesterday, and you're probably aware, that Royal, their commission voted against the will of the people to put low-income housing in their neighborhood. The neighborhood objected to it, but the commission voted to do it. They voted, I don't know if it was unanimously, but they voted to do that. And I'm just hearing, I mean, I don't live specifically there, but I am a resident of Dearborn, and that's a concern that I have, that people need to be heard.
Well, I can, yeah, people do need to be heard, that that's not before us right now, but I've been very consistent over my 12 years. I have never supported a single project that had a low income or subsidized housing. I don't believe in it. I didn't believe in it when we did Habitat for Humanity, when I showed them that over 50% of them failed. That's documented. I don't believe in that aspect. I think that you have to have a medium income for what's the area. So that's just me personally. I've made that abundantly clear. I have never supported one. But that's not what's before us tonight, Ms. Unger.
So the rezoning will no longer be residential, single-family housing? That's what you're asking to change?
That is what the petitioner is requesting.
Okay, thank you.
My pleasure. Okay, Mr. Bob Price? Price?
Hi, my name is Rob Burse, 24911 Auburn Street. I'm representing my parents, Ted and Frieda Burse. I was here a few weeks or whenever it was ago. They're 100 years old, they're the only two original homeowners on Linden Street, 1121 Linden. You know, they're very concerned about this. I told my mother I was coming here today, and you know, she had a real interesting comment. She said, you know, if they built these high-risers, do whatever, it's not going to affect me. I'm going to be gone before this is all done. But I really feel sorry for the residents that live in this area, they're going to have to deal with something like this that isn't based on, again, the housing situation that they're, the single-family homes and such. So it kind of caught me, an interesting point. I'm hoping she lives a long time, but this is going to take some time, obviously. And this... And as one of the other fellows mentioned, you know, it's kind of developed in that area. I grew up there, as I mentioned before, single-family homes. I think the Linden Walnut on the side where I grew up is like a hidden gem for Dearborn. It's probably the biggest cul-de-sac in the city of Dearborn. And when you look at that, it's a great thing. So you're wondering that big area, and I know it's tough with all these plans and everything to do, but if you make a huge cul-de-sac in that area, it'd be pretty cool for single-family homes. Again, different story, but it's something I think that most of the people in here are kind of looking forward to do. You know, now that you get single-family homes there, the city grows, you got more kids going to Epsom Ford, I'm an Epsom Ford graduate, that's a good thing, right? There's more kids going there. The whole traffic and such is really tough. One interesting point, I actually wrote this down when we were talking, and I forgot the planning commission lady, what was your first name? You're, I'm sorry.
Miss Bean Canny.
Okay, good, hi. You kind of mentioned that access road that Corwell has right now that cuts through. I'm sure the residents here all know that, maybe you guys do or don't, I'm sure the commission doesn't. That road is used for almost all the EMS vehicles that come from East Dearborn. They use that as a shortcut to come through that road and then cut into Oakwood Hospital. They don't go to Rotunda by stout and come around, it takes longer. So you're adding this area there, it's already being used as EMS shortcut, and no one's looked into that. I'm not being down on you or anything, but you guys don't live there, I go to visit my parents, we get stopped a lot of times when I am, it's a shortcut. So that road's already being used, and it's not real feasible for this big area.
You have 30 seconds.
Very good, thank you. So, you know, those are just a couple of things that are there, there's all the other pieces, the traffic and flooding and all of that, but again, it just doesn't seem that's the best use of the zoning area. And, you know, the plan comes in, master plan, you hit it, but appreciate your time and good luck, and we'll see what happens.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next we have Mr. Kevin O'Brien.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you all for serving the city of Dearborn, all your elected officials. I really appreciate you all. I want a question answered regarding the meeting held January 9th of 2023, almost 18 months ago and more. The City Plan Commission, Article 5, Section 2, rezone to notify all residents within 300 It didn't happen, but I would, you know, like to request that mailing list. Also, Katie, were you the planning commissioner on January 9th of 2023?
I'm not a planning commissioner, I'm the planning and zoning manager.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Again, Mr. O'Brien, I know.
I didn't mean to address...
I know, but remember, I want you to address the council.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I'm going to give you leeway, but I think you know how my stance is.
I know, I'm sorry. It was brought up, though, that all the rules have been changed just recently. So we're working off rules from 18 months ago in a meeting that was approved 18 months ago. There's five commissioners present, four not present. A lot of things have been brought up multiple times. I want to start first with infrastructure on the property. If this gets rezoned, is the entire property going to be private property, number one? And number two, if it's not, then it's going to be increased infrastructure on the city of Dearborn, starting with the sewers at 14 and 1/2 feet in the cut in my backyard. Then we're going to have to install storm sewers and sanitary sewers, and then we're going to have to install water mains and fire hydrants, and any other pertinences that I missed, which could include backflow prevention systems. High-rise residential, stacked housing, NFPA requires fire sprinkler suppression systems, which is going to require all the housing units to have a separate meter for fire protection and a fire department connection. They're going to be built for separate drinking water and fire use. You brought it up the last meeting in regards to budget, having water be available.
You have 30 seconds.
So, having this been said, are we going to have the money for that investment for water, sewer, anything that the city would normally own, operate? And also, once we put it in, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say "we," is it going to be installed to the city's standards unlike the subdivision that we had to take over on Tyreman, where it had substandard roads, substandard steward, I go on and on, and I know too much about the city councilmen, so...
I'm sorry, Mr. O'Brien.
Also, one thing about Ford Motor Company, if they have a problem with housing, let them build on their own land and provide housing for all of their people. Oakwood Hospital does it for all of their doctors coming, and they all have housing within the hospital. Oh yeah, it happens.
Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
I'm sorry for taking so...
No, no, okay.
And one other thing, I'd really like to take a moment, Kevin Krieger passed away.
Yes, we have, yeah.
You've already mentioned, you didn't mention...
No, no, we haven't, because he is a commissioner and we respect the family rights, we are going to bring that forward on the next council meeting, but we are, it was a tragic loss.
Just one moment of silence, please, for the family.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you all.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. O'Brien. Just a couple of clarifications, the planning commission, whatever rules they're abiding by, they are subsidiary and they don't make the decision, this body makes the decision, the council makes the decision. We're not working on 18-month rules, we're working on the state of Michigan laws, and there's been many times that myself and my colleagues have completely disagreed with the planning commission, many times. So the planning commission is a volunteer body that works very diligent to try to do a lot of very, very good work to help the council, but it is not up to them on what happens with the rezoning. And then regarding the sewer and the infrastructure and all that information, that is not for the council today, but I think that the MS4 regulations and the water retention on the same property is a requirement of the petitioner and the owner of the property. We have one more person here, it's Mr. Blake.
Thank you, council president and council members, for the opportunity to speak tonight. Heard the word homeowner tonight, and on different nights from here, and anybody that's a homeowner is going to have nervousness and concerns when they talk about zoning changes and what could happen in their neighborhood. So these homeowners in this neighborhood have some same thoughts and concerns that anybody would have if this was going on in their neighborhood. The proposed zoning changes are things, some of them are a little bit toward the extreme side that none of us would welcome coming to our neighborhood. It's been single-family housing zoning for 75-plus years, maybe? And over the years, the city of Dearborn has always stood strong with good moral character to make decisions about what they're going to do. So all we're asking is that whatever gets done, please do the right thing and understand the whole picture and do something that we can all look at each other and be proud of what happened, we're done moving forward. Use some creative thinking, please. And there's a couple of places in the city that Fairlane Town Center is going to be, could be used to, for some of these ideas and things that they want to do, and Ford World Headquarters has moved to the train station. Something's going to have to be done with that property, too. You know, the residents understand that sometime there will be a development with that Oakwood property. Please be careful what we do. Thank you.
Thank you again, and just the commitment from Ford Motor Company, because I sat in on those, is not the train station. The train station is a hub for their engineering and technology aspect. They are investing multi-millions of dollars in Dearborn, almost a billion dollars in Dearborn. You're correct, though, it's not the Michigan Avenue, Southfield location, it's closer to Epsom Ford, it's a new hub. So that's a tremendous reinvestment, and also, the mayor's had, I don't want to speak for him, had many conversations or several conversations with Bill Ford, and the reinvestment to where I was married, at the Dearborn End, which he's made commitment that that's going to be the gem of the state of Michigan. So Ford Motor Company is not going anywhere. Okay, thank you. Anyone else here to speak? Okay, please step forward to state your name and address for the record regarding this item. Yeah, okay.
Hello, my name's Taylor Morey, 3804 Alice Street. So I want to show my support for this issue item. I think it's really impactful, important, that so many people want to live in Dearborn, right? I have a friend who rents a house down the street from me, and like, Dearborn's not always the cheapest place to rent at or to buy a home. You could move to Taylor or, you know, any of our neighboring cities are cheaper. So I think we should definitely see that it's amazing that people want to live here and do our best to allow them to live here, however we can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we have now the petitioner, Mr. Nizzi Jawad.
Nizzi Jawad, owner, $18,000 Oakwood. I can't speak too loud, I have lung allergies, so I'll do my best. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Within this three minutes, I'll keep it short as much as I can, I'll just focus on some of the important issues that concern the residents. Ensuring that during all this time, I have paid close attention to the main concerns and neglected all the negative impacts that were given back to me negatively on a personal level. I don't look at it with any types of grudge, but I look at it as a part of a concern as well. I can't claim that I'm an expert with everything, I don't watch, not about rezoning, not about anything. I'm a healthcare provider myself, I'm a college lecturer at the College of Pharmacy at Wayne State University. I've been a longtime resident of Dearborn for the last 50 years. I don't want to talk about my accomplishments, I'm not here to do that, but I'm here to talk about my care into everything. That is why when the residents are concerned about water or privacy or traffic or anything in a sense of a concern, I take it into consideration, and I don't make the final decisions, because I come from a school where I was taught that being part of the solution is always where I need to be, a good and a fair solution, and that's what I'm here for. We are dependent on our city and city officials, architects, planners, and engineers, to also impose on those requirements that will ensure that all those concerns by the residents or neighbors, not just within the 300 feet, but all along, ensuring that, I don't know if anybody have an idea, but between the RE and the residents in the back, you're talking almost a $25 billion project is going there down the road. So this is a hefty investment, it's a financial burden that's taken by this person only. Taking all of that into consideration, everybody has the right to be concerned, but neglecting concerns as well is a bad thing, and I don't think that I have neglected any concern over these last, geez, quite a few rounds that I sat on this huge roller coaster.
You have 30 seconds.
I want to leave this so that I'm dependent on a good decision, a fair and a good decision as I said, and a good solution. My number and my name is available to all the residents and all the neighbors who wish, whether this moves forward or it doesn't move forward. I am here with an open heart, my doors are open, to listen and discuss and see what we can do. With that, I leave you, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Jawad, appreciate you, thank you. All right, any other questions or comments on this item? All right, there's another one, okay, sir, would you like to step forward?
Hello, Jonathan Kade, 22712 Nonna Street. I live in the Ford Homes. I was actually born in Oakwood, so that's, I guess that legitimizes my point of view, but it seems to me that many of the concerns people have with developing this property are going to be concerns that they would have with any development of this property other than single-family housing. And I don't think that building large mansions on that property really makes a whole lot of sense for the city of Dearborn. I drive on outer drive back from work every day that I don't take the bus, and I drive through that area, and it seems to make sense as it develops, as Beaumont invests more there to have more housing, to have more resources. And if I lived in the neighborhood, I would, you know, prefer to have retail and be able to walk somewhere. I love living in the Ford Homes and being able to walk to restaurants, being able to walk to pharmacies, be able to walk to grocery stores, and, you know, I would love to see that happen for my neighbors in the Snowwoods area as well. And finally, just a thought, if this doesn't get approved, how about Village Plaza? We'd love to have a high-rise there, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Kincaid, appreciate that. All right, any other questions or comments on this item? Okay, Mr. Clerk, can we have the second final reading of this ordinance?
This is the final reading of ordinance number 24-1819, an ordinance to amend Section 9.02 of ordinance number 06-1111 of the city of Dearborn by rezoning the property located at 18,000 Oakwood Boulevard from an RA, one-family residential district, to a BB, a community business district, RE, multiple-family residential, and VP, vehicular parking district, zoning classification.
So Clerk, can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Al Sowafi.
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick.
No.
Council President Serini.
Yes.
Councilmember Enos.
No.
Councilmember Hamud.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Paris.
No.
Four yays, three nays, the ordinance passes.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, next item, good luck, Nizzi Jawad.
Item 34, ordinance on the table, ordinance number 24-1820, an ordinance to amend the Water and Sewers Chapter, Chapter 19 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Article 1 entitled "In General," resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Hamud to take from the table for its final reading.
All right, each year, the water and sewer rates are updated as part of the budget process. This year's estimated cost is $32.7 million payable to GLWA. The proposed 25 water and sewer rates remain unchanged with a methodology of 28% is a fixed cost and 72% as variable based on the customer's actual usage. A standalone fixed rate for fire line accounts is also in effect. This will result in a combination increase of approximately 2.8% and a fire line fixed rate increase of 4.9%. In addition to paying GWLA, the proposed rates directly fund water and sewer infrastructure, replacement projects, and operation and maintenance of 370 miles of water. This is effective July 1st, 2024. This is the second final reading of this ordinance. Any questions or comments? Okay, Mr. Clerk, can we have the final reading?
This is the final reading of ordinance number 24-1820, an ordinance to amend the Water and Sewers Chapter, Chapter 19 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Article 1 entitled "In General."
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Herrick.
Yes.
Councilmember Serini.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Council President Serini.
Okay.
Councilmember Enos.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamud.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Paris.
Yes.
Councilmember Al Sowafi.
Yes.
Seven yays, the ordinance passes.
Next item.
Item 35, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Enos, authorizing to begin negotiations and award a contract to BSNA in the amount not to exceed $900,000 for enterprise resource planning software package and requesting immediate effect.
All right, so the city's current enterprise resource planning, which is abbreviated as ERP, Control Systems, controls asset management, cash receipts, fleet management, general ledger, accounting, payables, and receivables, and a host of other functions. The current ERP system is outdated, cumbersome to use, requires highly-trained staff to perform routine functions as... perform routine functions, and has numerous operational limitations. The word of this contract represents a major step in our IT's goal to replace the city's current enterprise resource, again ERP system, software package, which was purchased in the late eighties. The evaluation team on behalf of the IT department recommends the word of a contract to BSNA for an implementation of a new citywide ERP software package. The city will like to begin negotiations with BSNA for the amount not to exceed nine hundred thousand dollars. The contract shall be valid through successful implementation and of selection of the ERP software package. This contract will provide the city with a new citywide ERP software package, is respectfully requested that the council authorize the word with immediate effect in order to facilitate timely negotiation and execution of the contract. I know our IT director's here, IT director, I'd like to have him up first. Yeah, 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 first.
And then we'll get you, yeah, we'll get you in there, absolutely.
This is a, you know, it's a big project, and I know that it's a great undertaking, and I know you're going to speak on it for a minute, but I just want to give some people, because my understanding from a lot of the directors is, people that we were hiring, we had to downtrain them onto how to use a system that was obsolete. And so, Director, if you'd like to just give us some idea of how overdue this is.
Absolutely, so Mansour Sharha, IT director, thank you for the opportunity. Again, we're speaking about the AS400, which is over forty years old system, the black and green screen that we're all familiar with.
Green screen, yeah.
Yep. This system absolutely right now is a single source for all the departments within the city, meaning if it happens that we run into an issue, the entire city will be obviously shut down. This is a risk that we have been mitigating for two and a half years, the time that I started leading the department. We are fortunate now that we're getting closer to replacing it with a cloud-based system that is going to provide us with redundancy, more security, and also automation and workflow.
Excellent. And just for some of the people out there, and some of my council colleagues that are newer, the last council, the last council, this was brought forward of a tune to almost a half a million dollars for a study, which I vigorously opposed, because I wanted to wait for it to see what we had under the new administration. I felt that a new administration would have a different look, and that they should be the one controlling that, so my colleagues agreed, and that never went off. So we were able now to partner with Google and do some tremendous things. I know that I, I'm sorry, the finance director has made many comments on how this synergy has been able to work, where in the past, he would have to take data and reinput it in into a single hub.
Absolutely.
I know that might not exactly be with the green screen or the ERP, but we have to get up to date, and I've talked to the mayor many times around this. He's also talked to me about AI, and where we're going in that direction, and I told him, that's great, but you're always going to be tracing the wheel. And for me, I wanted to move forward on this immediately, and I'm glad to see this come forward, because I was concerned for the security of our data and our infrastructure, and I know, Director, you have mentioned many times that how fragile and us not understanding your technology about single-item lining, and how one thing can actually end up like a domino and having multiple issues. So I don't think there's anybody that disagrees that this has passed its useful life, and it's time to go forward. The question, is this the right company to do business with, and is this the leader in the industry? Because Dearborn and our residents pay high taxes, and they expect the absolute best. So is it your opinion that BSNA is the right people for this?
Absolutely. So we're fortunate also to have hired a third-party consultant firm that they do nothing but ERP consulting. They led the discussion from the start to the point that we're at. BSNA is a local company in Michigan that also approved by the state of Michigan for all the finance codes that we will also benefit from. We also have presence with them, our tax and assessing department utilize BSNA currently. The only difference is we have their server locally here that is also outdated, however, they are going to the cloud. We did work with a lot of different vendors, we brought them onsite for multiple workshops, we worked with all the departments to provide feedback, we provided surveys from all the department directors as well. The vendors that were finalists, BSNA, Workday, and Tyler, BSNA stood out because of their flexibility, also the onsite training that they will provide. Their presence of the existing data will help on the data conversion when we move to the new system, and also their willingness to continue to support us with all the tax codes that the finance department will benefit from.
Excellent. And I'm hoping, and I'm sure you can answer this, that the input of the employees that are working on the day-to-day is going to be taken into effect on this.
Absolutely. So while we are working on the new system, the existing system will continue to run as has.
Of course.
The operation will not be impacted until we are hundred percent validated, we'll make the switch.
Okay. Just my hand, I can't, just my hand. Would you like to come forward? All right.
Amanda Bright McLennan, Chief Operating Officer for the city. I think you've heard the mayor speak so many times about the ERP system being the fundamental building block for all of our ability to really serve our residents. So the one piece that I think you've heard Director Sharha speak about repeatedly is the single sign-on capability for our residents. So I do want to highlight that capacity that is going to be coming with this system, where if I, as a resident, am a landlord, and I have rental properties plus my own home, you will be able to sign on with a single account, find out exactly what property taxes, water billings, you know, hopefully you've got your grass under control, but for some reason.
Yeah, I hope so.
You have an NOV, that will all be there as well.
Just a point of order on that one.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct, Councilman Hamud? Point of order? We had, I just have to make sure that Councilman Abraham is the one that originally brought up that single sign-in.
Yes.
So that was, I just want to make sure the council gets credit for that one.
Yes, sir.
All right, just want to make sure.
So the residents will be able to have that experience as well, which I think obviously is consistent with not only the council's vision, but the mayor's vision of Dearborn as a twenty-first century city, and actually moving beyond our peers in this way. So we're very excited.
Yeah, we definitely are. I mean, there's so many good things that I'll talk about at the end of the meeting, that the directors are very fortunate to be able to have reins on a city that is willing to invest and get thirty million dollars in grants just this cycle alone, over a hundred million in the last count, to have directors that are able to actually implement the vision that they'd like, because there's many places where they cannot afford to do that. And we've seen it, there are cities that are in disarray, closing down all over, and we wouldn't stand for that. So it's a great opportunity to showcase the talents, to build something from ground up, from a website that was dot org to dot gov, right? And to make things online, make things easier for our residents. And this is the heart of the system, so we fully understand. It's very costly, and we want to make sure we make the right decision. But thank you for that. I want to open it for my colleagues, any questions or comments for the director or the CEO. Chief, you have anything like that?
Just that I want to acknowledge the hard work and dedication of the team that is speaking in front of you today, but also the countless staff members and team members, including your office as well, who participated in helping us make this decision, as collectively together, we were able to come to this conclusion, and we're just extremely excited and happy about next steps, and not being able to see Bill Gates' first computer when we log in.
That's right.
So no more black and green screens, and into the new age.
Absolutely. Councilman Al-Sawafi.
Thank you, Council President. I'm very excited for this investment, it's much needed for our city. I know, Ms. McLennan, she spoke about the single sign-in for residents. Director Sharha, is there anything else our residents can expect? I know this is a lot of background improvements for the employees in the city of Dearborn, but is there anything else on the interface side for the residents that they can expect?
Absolutely. So the major benefit that we will notice day one post-launch is the automation process that we will provide to our residents. Right now, if you come to the city of Dearborn between seven AM and nine AM, you will get to know all the contractors that work in the city. They're here because everything is paper-based, right? They're submitting their papers, whether it's a plan, whether it's a permit, whether it's inspection, and also they're checking on their statuses. All that will be gone once we implement the system, because everything will be online, automated, and you can get statuses through your phone, or you can check the website, and you'll log in with your account that you will create. So there is definitely a tremendous benefit for our residents, starting day one post-implementation.
That's amazing. And I always believe that the relationship with the city should be invisible, that you shouldn't have long lines of people at the city hall or administrative center. It should be where it's seamless, online, get things done. Residents don't want to spend a lot of time in this administrative test, so I appreciate you working on this, and just I just want to take a moment to highlight all the great work that you've been doing, Director Sharha, since you've been here with the city, so I really appreciate you. I know you walked into a lot of stuff that feel like prehistoric, and you took on a lot of initiatives, so thank you so much.
I appreciate that, thank you. All right, any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Even from the audience? All right. Any objections to unanimous roll? Hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item thirty-six, resolution by councilmembers Abraham and Herrick, awarding a three-year best source contract with one three-year renewal option to Paycom in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars for the first year, and implementation fees in the amount of twenty-two-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifteen dollars and twenty-seven cents for human resources information software.
All right, the Human Resources Administrator is looking to secure a human resource information system, or HRIS, to maximize efficiencies in both payroll and human resource functions by simplifying report generation, enhancing recruitment capabilities, and ensuring compliance, to name a few. Currently, the Human Resource Department must rely upon other departments to provide fractions of limited data. Here, the Paycom can store all necessary employee data, generate real-time reports, track employee trainings, identify and communicate with qualified candidates throughout the US, support our compliance requirements, and manage all-time keeping functions. Paycom is an HRIS system that can accommodate various needs by automating most of our daily processes of both departments. After review and demos of several ERP and HR systems, Paycom has been identified as the best source due to its brevity, implementation timeline, and ongoing customer service, of course, costs, as well as thorough research done by understanding the city of Dearborn as a unique needs. Finance and administration in conjunction with purchasing recommends this best source purchase of the human resources information software from Paycom. The contract will be for three years with implementation fees of twenty-two-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifteen dollars and twenty-seven cents, and a first-year cost of two-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars with a three-year renewal. It is requested that the council award the contract and the renewal with immediate effect. So we have our director. Director, would you like to state your name and title?
Yes, absolutely. Danielle Chaney, Human Resources Administrator.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the Danielle. It wasn't loud enough.
Chaney, I'm sorry, Danielle Chaney.
No, no problem. I know we met, and the council's met you before, we appreciate you being here tonight for your item, and I know you've been the director for about, is it a year?
I celebrated a year this week.
All right.
Or last week.
See, I was going to get good with that, one year.
Thank you.
Well, I know I had a great conversation with you in front of all the council, and asked you direct questions that you answered, which I thought were very elementary, so I appreciate you coming forward on this, on this particular item. I was fascinated on how, I mean, it was almost like, you know, grid paperwork you were getting. So how much is this going to improve, and how much is this needed?
This is, so I'm an HR nerd. I love everything HR. I've been in the industry almost twenty years, and I have had an opportunity to work with several different HRIS systems. I have not yet worked for an employer that didn't have an HRIS system. So that just kind of frames the necessity for it. It will maximize efficiencies, it will automate probably, I would wager, eighty-five percent of our current HR processes now, which are all being done manually, which obviously will open up the opportunity for errors and lost information, and what we want to do is make sure that we're providing accurate information to my business partners, as well as to the residents. It will offer an opportunity for our residents to apply for jobs in a much more streamlined process. We'll have the ability to not just recruit passively, so waiting for candidates to come in and apply, but we'll have the opportunity to go out and find candidates, especially for some of our tough-to-fill positions.
Right.
We'll be able to go out and get them, as opposed to hoping that they apply. We'll have the opportunity to track trainings across all departments throughout the city of Dearborn. Compliance, we'll be able to track and monitor. It's, I can't say enough how, I'm not sure how we are functioning without it. We've done an amazing job thus far, but if there's an opportunity for us to take it to that next level, and be competitive in terms of what we have to offer our residents, our employees, I didn't even get to the benefits for the employees, it's self-service. So employees will be able to go in and look at their paychecks before they're processed. The payroll functions will be automated through Paycom. We've, our sales rep came in and spent almost three months working with different departments, working with payroll, working with HR. They've given us some other neighboring cities who have used Paycom, so we've got some feedback from other police and fire departments who have those specialized schedules. They're going to offer us ongoing customer service, so once it's implemented, they're not going to disappear on us. We have the opportunity to have that two-way, ongoing conversation with them. They're going to keep our software updated, so it's a complete win, in my opinion, and I hope that I'm able to demonstrate that to you all today.
Well, we appreciate you bringing this forward, and the administration, of course, CEO, and everyone regarding this. We know it's well overdue. Have, just for me, in your tenure, have you used anything similar to this in other cities?
I have. So I have used, with the city of Detroit, we use NeoGov as well, and we tried to kind of use workarounds to make it more than just an applicant tracking system, and that was a fail. We used something that was city of Detroit-specific that our IT team kind of helped to develop and patch together, which it helped, but it wasn't sufficient.
So it was going to be better?
This is going to be better.
So NeoGov is going to be gone?
Yes.
Yeah, I didn't really like that. I'll be honest with you.
You don't have much longer to deal with it, you guys, but yes.
That's good for Jackie, right? All right, excellent. Well, we appreciate it. I want to open up my colleagues, again, on this, this is one of those scenarios where it's a beginning of a rebirth, and there is going to be costs going forward that we need to incur to keep us reinvestment, but as anything on this council and this administration's term, we have reinvested in pretty much everything, which is excellent. Anything from my colleagues? Councilman Hamud.
This and the ERP, I'm actually very excited. It's very nerdy stuff, but this is so important.
It is.
Think about it, so I'm actually really excited about this stuff. So thank you so much.
Excellent.
And for your hard work as well, so.
Thank you.
Yep. And again, like I said, you didn't even have this in Detroit, so this is going to give you even more tools to help show your skills. I just want the directors to know how important that is.
Absolutely.
Excellent, thank you. All right, any other questions or comments on this item? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, I'm sorry, is there any objection to unanimous roll? Hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item thirty-seven, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Paris, authorizing a three-year cooperative contract purchase from the library network, and in an amount not to exceed forty-four-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars for telecommunications services for the library, and requesting immediate effect.
All right, the Dearborn Public Library is a member of the Library Network, or TLN, which is recognized cooperative purchasing groups for libraries in the state of Michigan. This item is for a library to renew telecommunications contract, high-speed fiber internet access and hardware with the library network. This renewal will ensure reliable, fast network at all locations for our library patrons. The cost is not to exceed forty-four-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars, which is fourteen-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars per year, pending future fiscal budgets. The contract is effective July first, twenty twenty-four, and runs through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven, and we have our director here, Director.
Hello, Council, Betty Adams, Library Director. This did go out to bid, it is a renewal of the, because TLN is the best at what they do, and providing the service, and met every need that we needed going forward, as well as from the city's side. Any communications with IT from Mansour have been established with TLN, and the working relationship is there, and we see no issue with going forward.
All right, excellent, and then you also did bid it out again.
Correct.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, we appreciate it. I mean, as many people Okay, excellent. Thank you. We appreciate it. I mean, as many people feel like they're very connected in their homes, there's a lot of people that are not. And they use the library for a lot of their work that they need to do, whether it's personal, professional, or, you know, whatever it is specifically. So we want to make sure that it is, we have not, I have not had complaints regarding our software or internet base at the libraries. So I'm glad that it's working good.
And I'd like it to continue, so thank you.
Absolutely. That's why we're here. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any objection to unanimous roll? Okay, unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item thirty-eight, resolution by council members Herrick and Abraham, authorizing year three of the first three-year renewal option and the second three-year renewal option for the contract with Nickel and Saff Inc. in the amount not to exceed $2,390,781.73 for property and casualty insurance for fiscal year 2025, resulting in a new contract expiration of June 30th, 2028, and requesting immediate effect.
The city's current property and casualty insurance coverage expires June 30th, 2024. The expiration, the expiry renewal premium is $1,962,752, which reflects a $1 million self-insured retention and a $12 million aggregate in general liability, law enforcement liability, auto liability, public officials, and employment practices coverage. Property, crime, and inland marine coverages are also affordable. The new premium for the renewal period of July 2024 through June 30th, 2025 will be in an amount not to exceed $2,390,781.73, which is an increase of 21.81% increase. Nickel and Saff is continuing to research for additional coverage options to ensure that all avenues are exhausted. The self-insured retention and current coverage secured will remain the same. It is recommended that the city exercise a four-year renewal option with Nickel and Saff through June 30th, 2028, with immediate effect to avoid coverage lapse in service. So for myself, I had several questions regarding this during the committee, the whole, I mean, anytime you have a 21% increase and us having a $1 million self-insurance, it is a concern. A couple of things for the administration and Jackie to make note. I'm going to ask that in the future, these renewals for these premiums be brought forward before, within three months before the expiration date, because I'm not one that would want to leave the city uncovered. I want our residents to know, too, that being here for 12 or 13 years can tell you that there is a value in the insurance coverage for situations that we arise. Some of us look at our tax bill really carefully and have seen county tax saying judgment of lean. You know, what that basically means is they didn't have coverage for it, and they're passing it on to the taxpayers or it exceeded the coverage limits. We don't want that to happen to our residents. So we're trying to make sure that we have enough coverage to cover all our employees, all the liability, our police officers. So there is a lot involved in it. Nickel and Saff is a broker, okay, which I have no problem with them, other than an incident we had a few years back, which they clearly understood and rectified regarding an ambulance that was out of service, that they promptly found us a replacement one for a rental. So my only request is to make sure, and Jackie, that we make this a request from the administration, that this, from now on, be brought forward within at least 90-day timeframe to exercise, looking into other sources. Again, I know that we received an email from our legal department regarding all the coverages and reasons and rationale stated by the company as to why our premiums continue to increase in the 20% range. So with that being said, have any questions or comments from my colleagues? Okay. Any questions from anyone in the audience? Okay. Any objection to unanimous roll? Okay, hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item thirty-nine, resolution by council members Herrick and Paris, approving the application of Zambelli fireworks at 120 Marshall Drive, Warren Dale, Pennsylvania, to obtain a special events license in order to conduct firework displays at Greenfield Village 20,900 Oakwood on July 2, 3, 4, and 5, 2024 at 10:00 p.m. Also authorizing the fire chief to schedule rain dates as required and requesting immediate effect.
All right. Greenfield Village is seeking council approval for a fireworks show, July 2nd, 3rd, 4th, and 5th at 10:00 p.m. The display will take place at 20900 Oakwood. Also requesting the fire chief to be allowed to set a rain date as needed. The fire marshal has reviewed the plan and has approved of the setup and emergency planning. This is the annual fireworks that show up at the Greenfield Village, which I have the pleasure of watching from my backyard. I do want to make an amendment to it, because I did not see the request for a waiver of the noise ordinance. Mr. Roma, do you see that in there? I didn't see that.
No, because traditionally, this falls under the fireworks, so you don't need the waiver.
So you don't need it anymore for fireworks? Okay, that's great. So it's not necessary for fireworks?
Yeah, it's under a different code section.
Okay, excellent. Well, I appreciate that. I wanted to make sure that was covered, because we've had, I wanted to make sure we didn't have this problem in the future. All right. So good luck to the fireworks. I'm sure they're going to be beautiful, as always. Any questions or comments on this? Any objection to be placed on unanimous roll? Okay, hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item forty, resolution by council members Abraham and Enos, authorizing the Finance Director to recognize and appropriate the National League of Cities grant funds in the amount of $10,000. Also authorizing the Director of Public Health to sign the grant agreement on behalf of the city and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, the Department of Public Health was selected of one of five cities nationally for the National League of Cities, or NLC, 15-month peer-to-peer program. The network aims to address health inequities by developing and implementing comprehensive and equitable policies. Dearborn was selected alongside four other cities from across the country to develop action plans and receive tailored expert assistance from the NLC and national consultants to advise its efforts to reduce health disparities by addressing the root cause of social, economic, and racial inequities. The five cities selected were Austin, Texas, Dearborn, Michigan, Manchester, New Hampshire, Montgomery, Alabama, and this one, you might have to help me with Rancho, Chugamunga?
Cucamonga.
Cucamonga, California. But it makes sense to be in California.
Took me like three quarters.
The opportunity comes with a $10,000 grant to support the department's efforts in advancing its work. It is requested the Finance Director be authorized to recognize and appropriate these funds in the amount of $10,000, and that the Director of Public Health be authorized to sign the grant agreement on behalf of the city of Dearborn with immediate effect. And we have our director here. Director, would you like to state your name?
Good evening, Council. I am the Director of the Department of Public Health.
Excellent. So Director, if you'd like to just give us a little bit more information. This, I think, is a second or third grant that you have won and have continued to progress on the mayor's, and I'm sure your vision, when the Health Department was reinstituted in your fashion, as health and policies in everything that we do.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Council President. It's been a few more than two to three grants we've gotten. And, you know, I think the dollar amount here is nice, but the impressive part of this partnership is that for the last 15 months, we've been collaborating with our sister cities that you just mentioned, engaged in monthly sessions, learning from sister cities, and I think most importantly for us, sharing Dearborn's story with cities across the country. You mentioned some of those cities, Austin, Manchester, Montgomery, Rancho, Cucamonga. Those aren't small cities. They're cities that have typically been on the national scene. And so Dearborn is being thrust into those positions because of the mayor's vision, because of what we're doing in this department. And so it's really exciting to be able to share that story, and we're really excited to take other people's money, which is the best part. We're, I think, for every dollar that we've spent as a department, we've returned something like seven to eight dollars to the city in the form of grant funding and other sort of mechanisms. So we're really proud of that as well.
Yeah, you should be. And, you know, we've mentioned in the past what you've done with the U of M, with your alma mater, and how you've brought in all those fellows. So there's a lot of work being done in there. And I know I go by your office and see that steam machine going by. And I know that you're doing work in there, because it's showing here in what's happening today. And for me, you're absolutely right. It's not $10,000 to be put in one of five. This is what I was talking about with the directors having an opportunity, and you're taking it by the horn. You invited all the council, which I think everybody had took the liberty to meet your staff when you first started, which were all fellows, non-paid for by taxpayers, and grew a department of one to where we're at today. And it does matter, because with the health of the residents and being a manufacturing town, and the mayor's vision of deindustrializing areas where we can, we are the hometown of Henry Ford, is very important. So this work that you're doing is being recognized nationally. We really, really do appreciate it. I know that you, you know, I supported this initiative from the beginning. We have concerns with air quality, our air monitors, the things that you've been doing is excellent. And your social media, I just want to make sure for the other directors, is excellent. And you tag all the council people so we could share it and get it out there. I think it's a great job. So this is something that I really look forward to seeing. It's just another feather in your cap, and your department's been doing a tremendous job.
Thank you, Council President. Appreciate that.
Any questions or comments from my colleagues, from the director? All right. Any objection to unanimous roll? Okay, unanimous roll shall be attached. Thank you. Next item.
Item forty-one, resolution by Council President Pro Tem Herrick, supported by Council Member Abraham, recognizing the month of June 2024 as Gay Pride Month in the city and requesting immediate effect.
All right. This resolution was offered by Council President Pro Tem Herrick. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Dearborn prides itself in being a welcoming city. And in that spirit, I offer this resolution. The city of Dearborn supports the rights of every citizen to experience equality, freedom, and freedom from discrimination. And whereas all people, regardless of age, gender identity, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical challenges, have the right to be treated on the basis of their intrinsic value as human beings. And whereas the city of Dearborn accepts and welcomes people of diverse backgrounds and believes a diverse population leads to a more vibrant community, and whereas everyone should be able to live without fear of prejudice, discrimination, violence, and hatred based race, religion, gender identity, or sexual orientation, whereas LGBTQ individuals contribute to the cultural, civic, and economic successes of our country. Whereas while society at large increasingly supports LGBTQ equality, it is essential to acknowledge the ongoing struggle for equality members of the LGBTQ plus community face, and the need for education and awareness remains vital to end discrimination and prejudice. And whereas June is celebrated as LGBTQ plus Pride Month nationwide, now therefore, be it resolved, June is recognized as Gay Pride Month in Dearborn, Michigan, and we encourage all residents to work to eliminate discrimination wherever it might exist, build a culture of inclusiveness and acceptance, and celebrate our diverse community. Be it further resolved that the 34th Dearborn City Council of Dearborn recognizes June 2024 as National Gay Pride Month, and that this resolution shall be given immediate effect. Thank you.
All right. Any questions for my colleagues? Okay. Any objection to unanimous roll? Okay, unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item forty-two, resolution by council members Paris and Enos, concurring in the appointment...
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, there was comments on this item. I apologize.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I apologize. We have first Ashley Godfrey Quam. Did I pronounce that right? I apologize.
Good evening, esteemed city council members. My name is Ashley Godfrey Quam, and I've lived in Dearborn for 21 years, and am currently raising two children here. Additionally, I serve as president of PFLAG's Dearborn Chapter. PFLAG is the nation's largest organization dedicated to supporting, educating, and advocating for LGBTQ plus people and those who love them. I wrote this before you voted, so I...
That's okay.
It'll reference that. I'm here today to thank Council President Pro Tem Herrick and Council Member Abraham for proposing a resolution that would recognize Pride Month in Dearborn and ask that other council members support the resolution. Dearborn is a wonderfully diverse community. I am so happy to call Dearborn home, as this city truly thrives on diversity. LGBTQ plus residents are doctors, artists, firefighters, volunteers, and small business owners. They contribute immensely to the fabric of our community. Pride Month is a time to honor the history of the LGBTQ plus rights movement, their contributions, and their ongoing fight for equality. By issuing a Pride Month resolution, you send a powerful message of inclusion and acceptance to our LGBTQ plus residents. You show them that they are valued members of Dearborn. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
All right. Next, we have Jackson Wagner.
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Jackson Wagner. I'm a lifelong Dearborn resident. Official recognition of June as LGBTQ Pride Month is the best thing the city of Dearborn can do to uphold the values of an open society. Official recognition of Pride Month upholds the values of free and open discourse, where diverse perspectives and identities are welcomed. The more tolerant Dearborn is of marginalized communities, the better the conditions for healthy political discourse. Official recognition of Pride Month would demonstrate the city of Dearborn's commitment to being a pluralistic society that respects and embraces differences. Dearborn must reject intolerance. Today, the city council has discussed the need for Dearborn to foster the conditions for housing affordability and accessibility, so that new hires in the city, be they at Ford Motor Company or our many small businesses, can afford to live here. There's a nationwide housing affordability and accessibility crisis. The city should be concerned about whether kids who were born and raised here can afford to stay here, and about whether Dearborn is welcoming to the newcomers our city needs to continue growing and flourishing. But Dearborn has to be welcoming as a society, too, not just as a housing market or a labor market. Official recognition of Pride Month would show LGBTQ plus youth in Dearborn that the city has their back. An open society depends on strong norms of tolerance, on fostering the conditions of mutual understanding. Diversity has always been Dearborn's greatest strength. Prejudice has always been Dearborn's greatest vulnerability. LGBTQ plus people are found in every population, in every corner of the world. Our city's youth have the least say over where they live, or what kind of society Dearborn is. LGBTQ plus youth need Pride Month most of all.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Mick Steel.
Logan Telemore, 3804 Howell Street. I just want to say, I'm really appreciative that the council has brought this resolution forward. I would say vote yes, but you kind of already have. I just want to say, I am an openly trans person. I've been living here for three years now. I have never felt safer than since I moved here in Dearborn. And I just, I really appreciate the city finally, you know, acknowledging and celebrating Pride Month. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, next item.
Item number forty-two, resolution by council members Paris and Enos, concurring in the appointment of Brenda Geiger to the City Beautiful Commission with a term ending June 30th, 2027, and requesting immediate effect.
All right. Again, there is multiple appointments. Again, I wanted to recognize and thank everyone. These are volunteer positions that really help, you know, help our community. We do need these commissioners, and it is an honor that they are taking on and representing their city in the capacity in which they can. So this appointment is for Brenda Greer to the City Beautiful Commission for a three-year term. The term ends June 30th, 2027. And then, Mr. Clerk, for the items that are on this agenda, as well as the consent agenda, just a reminder that a failure of, I want this on every one of the resolutions, that a failure of a multi-body appointee to possess the required qualifications for appointment by the charter or by law shall result in the member's immediate vacancy from the body to which they were appointed. Again, I wanted to thank Ms. Greer for her ability to come forward and serve her city. Any questions or comments on the item? Any objection to unanimous roll? Okay, unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item forty-three, resolution by council members Enos and Hamud, concurring in the appointment of Michael Johnson to the City Beautiful Commission with a of Michael Johnson to the City Beautiful Commission with a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, Mr. Michael Johnson is being appointed as a City Beautiful Commission for a three-year term that will end June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. Again, we'd like to thank him for his service. Any questions or comments? Any objection to unanimous roll? Hearing none shall be attached. Next item.
Item forty-four, resolution by Councilmembers Abraham and Herrick, concurring in the appointment of Suzanne Urbansky to the City Beautiful Commission with a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, this appointment is for Suzanne Urbansky to the City Beautiful Commission as well. It's a three-year term that ends June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. Again, I'd like to thank her for her service. Any comments or questions on this item? Objection to unanimous roll? Okay, unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item forty-five, resolution by Councilmembers Paris and Enos, concurring in the appointment of Jalal Abdullah to the Dearborn Historical Commission with a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and requesting immediate effect.
This appointment is for Jalal Abdullah to serve on the Dearborn Historical Advisory Commission for a three-year term that ends June twenty twenty-five. Jalal will be completing the late passing of Mohammed Sayyan's last year of his appointment, of his term. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, any objection to unanimous roll? Okay, unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item forty-six, resolution by Councilmembers Enos and Paris, concurring in the appointment of Michael McCaffery to the Dearborn Historical Commission with a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven, and requesting immediate effect.
All right, again, we'd like to thank Michael McCaffery on his appointment to the Dearborn Historical Advisory Commission for a three-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. Questions or comments? Any objection to unanimous roll? Unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item forty-seven, resolution by Councilmembers Abraham and Enos, concurring in the appointment of Ramsey S. Mua to the Planning Commission with a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven, and requesting immediate effect.
All right, again, we'd like to recognize and thank Ramsey Samaya to the Planning Commission for a three-year term that ends June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, any objection to unanimous roll? Unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
We have one, walk on item, item number forty-eight, resolution in need of offer and support, adopting the tentative agreement between the City of Dearborn and the Nineteenth District Court and Police Officers Association of America, effective July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight, and requesting immediate effect.
All right, did we receive this via the email? This is a collective bargaining agreement. Do we have any offer?
I'll offer support.
Offered by Councilman Abraham, supported by Councilwoman Herrick. Right, we'd like to thank our legal department. These are always challenging situations, right?
Yeah, I would say, and the court as well as the union president for the court is here as well in the back.
Okay, good. Hopefully we'll be seeing the court in the future. That's excellent. All right, it's always, negotiations are always, they're tough. But at the end of the day, I always say if neither side is completely happy, that means you got a good deal. All right, any questions or comments on this item? Okay, any objection to unanimous roll? Okay, unanimous roll shall be attached. No, no. All right, any other questions? All right, next item, Mr. Clerk.
The agenda is complete for the evening.
All right, excellent. All right. So a couple of things for myself before we open it up to my council colleagues. I just wanted to just break a couple of recognitions. Sergeant Russell Faith retired from the Dearborn Police Department over twenty-two years. A career, I know him personally, excellent young man, was Officer of the Year in the past, fine, fine young man, and still very young to get out on a second career and retire. We wish him the best of luck. I wanted to congratulate our public schools trustee, Jim Thorpe. Mr. Thorpe was appointed to represent District Eight of the Board of Governors for the Michigan Association of School Boards. So I thought that was very important to recognize, and he's a great public servant and a great human being as well. And if you like to travel, have him on Facebook. You'll find a lot of good stuff he does. I follow him. Great stuff. He's a traveler, hiker. I love that stuff, so it's great. Since we're not going to have another meeting, I just want to wish everybody a very happy Fourth of July. Good time to have some barbecue and relax, and hopefully we'll get some good weather here. It seems like it just misses the weekend every week. What can you do? And of course, the fathers, Happy Father's Day coming up. Father and mothers are very important, and it's a great time to reflect whether your father is with you or not, to enjoy that time. It's nice, a nice time, especially at my house. So I wish everybody a happy Father's Day. Finally, I just want to recognize the recent celebration or recognition of D-Day and World War II. I mean, I could tell you, folks, I've said many times, possibly in my opinion, the greatest generation to ever live, that the situation where, you know, the country has embraced the remaining people that are still alive, took them to Normandy to see the beaches where they first came upon. I mean, I've said it many times, my brother is serving, he's in his twenty-ninth year as a captain of the United States Navy, obviously. And I could tell you, you know, the freedoms that we enjoy are not free. And to watch some of those services, I think we're very sombering to make you realize, you know, what is your contribution to the greater good of yours community? I've said many times to people that come up, you know, there's a lot of good things that are happening, and there's, you can always look at the bad. But something that really took to me was not only the ceremonies and the stuff that they did overseas, but some of the pictures of showing the boats and saying that ninety percent of those people did not make it off that beach in the first round. And those are the situations that we have today that allow people to come up and speak freely and have the speech freedoms that they have and the things that we have in our country, which is the greatest country in the world. Whether you agree with some of the things they do or not, we live in the greatest country in the world, hands down. And a lot of it has to do with that generation that went to war at a very, very, very young age. So it was really something that I wanted to mention and I thought was tremendous for our federal government, the way they handled and the groups that took people overseas and let them, one of gentlemen was a hundred years old, went out of a plane, skydived out of the plane, just as he did, I can't, how many years ago? Eighty years ago. So I just wanted to make sure I mentioned that and thank all those who have served. And those that who haven't have taken their portion, whether it's a commission, running for office, or doing something to better your community, it is very, it is worthy, and it does make a difference. So I wanted to thank them. Councilwoman Herrick.
Thank you, Council President. Just a couple of things that I'd like to acknowledge. First of all, Friday, this Friday, June fourteenth is Flag Day. Dearborn is continuing our tradition of working with the Dearborn L.A. War Veterans Council to hold a Flag Day ceremony where residents are welcome to drop off their used flags to give them a dignified retirement at the Flag Day ceremony. It's going to be held at six PM at Ford Field Park at the top of the hill on Cherry Hill, just as it has been for many years. The public is welcome, and it really is a meaningful ceremony for anyone who's attended. I have friends who don't even live in Dearborn anymore who contact me to find out to make sure that it's happening again because not many communities do such a special retirement of used American flags, and I'm proud of our city for continuing this tradition. Secondly, I'd like to give a warm send-off to Pastor David Nellis. He's been serving at First United Methodist Church for over six years here in Dearborn, and he and his wife, Glennis, have become a valued part of our community. David is known, of course, among his congregation for the things he does with them, to be a welcoming and inclusive place of worship. But even more importantly, David's been an important part of our Dearborn area interfaith network. And for those who aren't aware, we have a special community in that our houses of worship, the leaders in our houses of worship representing each faith regularly meet and discuss things that are important to the people who live here or visit here or work here in Dearborn, and how we can all work together to make our community stronger. And we work together in times that are good so that when there are challenges in the community, we have those relationships and we can count on them so that we're able to present a united front about faith as to who we are in Dearborn, especially when people who aren't from here question, you know, what's it like in Dearborn? And to have the Dearborn Area Interfaith Network working together is reassuring to me and I know to the other people who are familiar with the fact that these clergy come together along with working with our city administration and some of our police department and the public schools. So David, Pastor David Nellis, again, thank you for your service. I had the privilege of presenting a citation on behalf of the council to Pastor Nellis this past Sunday, and I know they're going to have a wonderful celebration this weekend, this next weekend, and some of my colleagues, I know Councilwoman Paris is planning to attend. And of course, my colleagues on council are welcome to go to that. Thirdly, very importantly, coming up on June nineteenth is Juneteenth. And Juneteenth is a celebration of the end of slavery back in eighteen sixty-five when more than two years after President Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation, finally enslaved Americans in Galveston Texas received word that they were free from bondage. Juneteenth is also a time in which we reflect on the terrible toll that slavery has taken on our country, and we're reminded to recommit ourselves to the work to ensure equity, equality, and justice for all. Dearborn stands out among other cities for the contrast between its present and its past. Recognized today as a welcoming community that celebrates cultural diversity, Dearborn also has a legacy left by longtime mayor who became nationally known as a segregationist. In Dearborn and across the country, we must continue the work that's been led throughout America's history by civil rights advocates and lawyers, abolitionists and educators, trade unionists, public officials, and everyday people who have fought to make real the ideals of our country's founding documents for everyone. Together, we can ensure the United States is the land of liberty, justice, and opportunity that was and is promised to all Americans. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hamud.
So among other celebrations coming up this week, so we have Eid al-Athha, which is going to be taking place this weekend. It's, so, you know, we have two Eid's in Islam. There's Eid al-Fathar, which is at the end of Ramadan. That's actually considered the small Eid, Eid al-Siyyat. And then we have Eid al-Kabir, which is Eid al-Athha, which actually takes place at the conclusion of the holy pilgrimage, which is Hajj for Muslims. So Eid al-Athha is a celebration that also includes, you know, making sure that your friends and family are fed, but also, you know, the poor of the community. So I think, just like with the other Eid, if you see your Muslim neighbors or people celebrating, you can tell them, Kalam Tukir, or Eid Said, or Happy Eid, Eid Mubarak. And, you know, just know that it's supposed to be a joyous time for people and a time of gratitude and charity. So, you know, Kalam Tukir to everybody at home and to the council.
Thank you. Councilman Paris.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to recognize our senior services within the city. I was talking to Donna Bechtel recently, who's the manager of senior services, had the opportunity to go over there and see the garden that they have planted outside the doors of the senior service center. And that's the far east end of the Performing Arts Center that a lot of seniors come in through. But I just want to let you know that I recently learned of that garden. It was planted by those east door, I'm sorry, and that on May ninth, about forty volunteers from the Dearborn Keller Williams Agency on West Village came out in force and planted this garden. I recently came out and looked at this garden that's now enjoyed by many, especially our seniors and staff coming in through those entrance doors. Every year, Keller Williams apparently has what's called a Red Day of Service, in which there are various branches do community service projects. And we were fortunate to have been chosen for this, and they planted the butterfly bushes, roses, ferns, begonias, and impatiens. Thank you to Keller Williams, and then thank you to our manager of senior services, Donna Bechtel, for showing me around and taking a look at it. It's something they stop over and take a look at. What I'd like to do, though, is ask if Director of DPW and facilities might answer a question for me. I've just grown a little bit concerned lately in that we have had reports of large trees that have come down as far as being cut down by our contractors. And I noticed that even on my own street, came down, ground up, you know, the limbs or whatever, got rid of the trees that were diseased and needed to come down. But the large trunks, the large limbs are still there in some areas since May twenty-ninth. And then I got another call about another area even today that trees have come down and wondering, just what is a reasonable expectation when a tree is cut down, especially a large one, when they're supposed to be picked up and no longer on the easement of their property? What would be reasonable anyways?
Good evening, Tim Hawkins, DPW Director. It's about two weeks. It's about fourteen calendar days to get the trucks. Those trees are being ground by, I believe it's Detroit Mulch is who's accepting them to try to reduce cost to residents. So as we deliver them, we have to deliver them to a site, the contractors do. They're ground and recycled into mulch and other products. So they are collecting them, they're trying to get as many as they can, but our cutters are faster than our delivery drivers. So I would say fourteen days is acceptable. We're trying to get out of, you know, as soon as we can, but we are trying to get them down so that we don't have the storm damage that we had in the previous year, and it's succeeding. We had minimalist, minimal trees come down in the last high wind storms.
That's right.
You know, and I'm very proud of what we've done and the lack of damage that's been created this year.
And even Council President brought it up recently, just bringing that issue up about trees that have come down that we have performed services for some other communities and needs, like recently Livonia.
We were contacted by Livonia during their catastrophe that happened, which was really significant. And actually, we were in talks with the mayor, and the mayor of Livonia was reaching out. And actually, they got Canton and another surrounding community to deliver all their staff. So we didn't actually go out to do it, but Dearborn was ready and willing to assist our neighboring communities in a time of need.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. On that note, I do appreciate that, but that was very tragic. We had a friend of mine, is one of the, a Livonia resident now, that was over there where the tree fell and a kid was, has lost his life. So, you know, I've been a big proponent. We've had people come and said that they think they're cutting them too short, and I think that we're, you know, we have our berths on staff, and I think we're doing a tremendous job of making sure, and the proof is, the trees are not falling down. We are taking a six- and seven-year tree process that hasn't been done, and now making sure that we're trimming and pruning these trees so that they can get their full life out of them. So I thought that was to be mentioned, and there is, as the councilman indicated that I spoke about last week, there is no surprise that we're having less trees coming down because we're doing the work ahead of time. And it's unfortunate. You see a loss of life happen from that aspect, which is, it's horrible. I mean, it's absolutely horrible. Young, young child, and mother was in critical condition on top of it. It's just, you know, as a city, there's nothing more important than the safety and security of your residents. And that does mean trees, and some of the trees are very old and are having issues, and we're getting them ahead of time. But we do appreciate the fact that you gave us that timeline, because I know I had called on one too that was out for...
Correct.
Around that time. So, and I do appreciate that. It is better because it does help our costs, and the main thing is get the tree down and make sure it's safe, but it does become a eyesore, so hopefully they can catch up with that aspect.
We are trying to get them as soon as possible, and believe it or not, we, one of our contractors took the larger trees first off the list.
Yeah.
Which we're getting smaller trees, which they're able to take more of the smaller trees on a truckload than the very large diameter, so hopefully we can expedite getting these off the lawns as soon as possible.
And the stumps.
Yeah, and the stumps.
All right. All right, great. Thank you. I did, Councilman, are you good? I did want to answer, mention something I forgot, because I know a lot of us feel there's only one school, a high school in the city of Dearborn. Dearborn, Dearborn, you know, what do they call it? Fort Sand grad? Fortson Grad?
Castle Ford.
And Dearborn Dad, Castle Ford. So, but I had to thank our Assistant Director of Recreation that brought to my attention Divine Child High School, which is a high school in the city of Dearborn, and they, their girls' track and field team won the state championship, Division II state championship. So thank you, Mr. Golich, Assistant Director Golich of Lenasno, and we sent a citation out to them and recognized them, so I wanted to make sure, you know, state championship's a big deal, so girls' track and field at Divine Child wanted to recognize them and congratulate them. And again, too, I did have my youngest child, I forgot to mention this, graduate from high school. I'll tell you, every one of the kids is a little different. It's, you don't want to party, Dad? No, no party. What's the big deal, graduating high school? He's off to Northwood University on a football scholarship in Midland, Michigan, going out there Friday. I think he's going to be shocked when he sees the size of the dorm room versus his room. There might be a little problem. But I want to wish everybody who had graduates, it's really, really nice, whether you have a graduate or not, to see the functions, and I want to thank our police department for the tremendous use of our reserves around the police, using our police reserves around all these graduation ceremonies to keep the people safe. Lot, a lot of people show up for the graduations, which is great. And so anybody had a graduate, congratulations to your graduate. It's bittersweet, it goes by so quick. I mean, it's, I don't know. My son, actually, too, is a 17-year-old graduate, still not even 18 until September, so just want to wish everybody who had a graduate or who had an opportunity to witness those tremendous feats, our kids are very bright, and you could see it all over social media. They're going to the best schools all over the country, and very proud of our school system. It's a great partnership with our school system. Anything else from my colleagues? All right, anything from the administration chief?
Yes, Council President, just a few announcements and reminders. Just a reminder, I know that Councilman Hamud mentioned Eid al-Athha, so happy Eid al-Athha to those residents who are participating and celebrating. As a reminder, the city will be closed on June 17 in observance of the holidays, so just as a reminder for our residents, June 17, which is the Monday, we will be closed. We are excited, this is the second year in a row that Camp Dearborn will have their fireworks, their summer fireworks, so on July 5, Happy Independence Day to us all, and on July 5 at dusk, which is 9:45, there will be fireworks at camp, so please, if you're able to, I was there last year, it was raining, but it was a hell of a show, so hopefully, all will be in attendance. Next, I have the, forgive me, I know you have here, oh, yes, Happy Juneteenth, June 19 is in recognition, so I just want to make that recognition for our residents, all that are participating and celebrating as well. So, coming from the best high school in the world, Fortson High School, yeah, it's very, I'm happy to announce this, but also as a tractor, it's kind of hard to stomach, but it's okay. My niece, actually, Lamise Hamadi, is on the varsity soccer team for Dearborn High.
Yes.
She's a freshman playing varsity. They actually won districts this year, so really proud of the girls and the team there, and wanted to make that recognition of the varsity team, so just kind of adding on to the Council President's comments there. And then the last one is, my niece is watching today, she's in the hospital, she had surgery, so just want to send a big hello to my big, like, amazing soldier, with the biggest heart and strongest girl I know, Mary Hussein, just had her tune in to this whole meeting, so God bless her, if she's still on, but just sending all our love to her.
Thank you, Chief. Speedy recovery. Excellent. Mr. Clerk, anything from your department?
Two quick things. Councilmember Herrick mentioned about the flag burning ceremony on Friday. We are accepting flags at the clerk's office, so residents have been coming by and dropping off flags, so I've got collected maybe 12 or 15 already, so keep the flags coming, and we'll dispose of them in the proper military burning on Friday. Also, ballots will be out late next week for those that vote absentee, so keep an eye out for those, probably by the end of the week, next week, for the ballots for the August election. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. All right, at this time, we are in our second public comment section. Again, anyone here to address the council regarding city business, please step forward and state your name and address for the record. A kind reminder, you have a three-minute limitation. The clerk will keep the time and give you a 30-second warning. All right, hearing and seeing, no one here to address the council. I will close the public comment section portion and entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
A motion adjourned by Councilwoman Herrick. We are adjourned.